So I didn't do much walking.
We're having a continuing discussion this evening of the Special Assessment District. And we're compelled to do that because last time, all of us were so into the details of it, I don't think we got to questions the way we needed to be able to answer questions, ask questions. So is there a further presentation to the little?
Tom, you said we had a copy of that. I don't believe we do have a copy, dude.
Thank you, Brian. This afternoon, and I put it in project.
That's a bad place for it.
Well, thank you for inviting us back. We're very happy to be here. We thought that we might just do a very brief introduction, reacquaint you with the process steps, the steps in the process of the formation of a special assessment district, and then show you a draft of the petition. And what's one of the critical aspects of the petition is defining the scope of what is covered by the district. So Thad and Joe are here again to answer questions, but we thought we might just start with Joe reviewing those two aspects, which I think a lot of the questions are.
Thank you, Tom. Mayor and counsel, thank you for having us tonight. And again, I'm Joe Lucas with Pope Flynn out of Charlotte. And Tom had just put together, you remember last time I had a four-page outline, the first page of which outlined the different projects that can be financed? Tom whittled it down to one page, dealing with process. And there'll be other questions outside of process, I'm sure, but we just wanted to remind you kind of the way it works under the statute, and then maybe some timing questions. So as Tom mentioned, Thad and I worked on, with Tom's help, a draft petition that you have in front of you as well tonight. Fairly straightforward document that lays out the facts in terms of who the property owner is, what the parcels are, the project proposed to be financed, which is a collective term to pick up the various pieces of the project you see outlined near the bottom of the petition, and an estimate of the cost. Now, for now, that cost is blank, and we can talk, we'll talk more about that. So once the landowner or landowners submit a petition, then the process begins with the town accepting it, and then adopting a preliminary assessment resolution, which you see here on the second item in B, has certain factors listed in it that include a statement of the town's intent to undertake the project, a description of the nature and location of the project, an estimate of the total cost, a statement of proposed terms of payment, and an order setting a time and place for a public hearing. So again, that's the initial step that the town would take after the landowner submits its petition. And from there, you follow the sort of timing of the statute. The public hearing can't be earlier than three weeks after you adopt a resolution, and for later than 10 weeks. So you have about a seven-week window to get the public hearing in. Normally, that public hearing occurs about a month after the petition, excuse me, after preliminary assessment resolution is adopted. Once the hearing is held, you would adopt a final assessment resolution, and that can't be done earlier than 10 days after the hearing is held. So again, that, if you're rushing through that process, it happens fairly quickly, but normally that's about a six to eight week timeframe. Following that, you see items E and F are the assessment role and the confirmation of the assessment role. That also involves a public hearing, once again. And this process, over time, in the two deals that I've worked on, and if you're on it, there have only been a handful, Mooresville and Hillsborough, I'll remind you that I worked on both those transactions. Process took four to four and a half months approximately. And that's from the time the petition is, excuse me, from the time preliminary assessment role is adopted by the town, to the time that the assessment role is confirmed, at which point, the lien of the assessment becomes a valid lien. So that's sort of recap of the process. And Tom and Thad and I are here to answer questions on process and other questions that you might have about the special assessment district generally.
And I might just maybe review what the expected improvements are.
Oh, on your draft petition, right. So the petition is drafted, this document you have in front of you. Yeah, thank you, Brian. The expected improvements are the second half of the page, the bullet points you see at the bottom. So the statute allows all of these, all of these costs to be financed. And so we start with roads and rights of way, including interchanges, sidewalks, stormwater infrastructure connected to roads, drainage, streetlights, landscaping, and then design and engineering and acquisition costs are all built in to overall project costs on roads. The second item is water and wastewater infrastructure, water and sewer, including design and engineering. Again, all that is permitted by the statute. So the overall costs of design, engineering, and then building out water and sewer. The third big item is the trails and biking and associated green space that includes parks, river landings, public areas. You see that spelled out. For now, for drafting purposes, we've added a bullet point for other, other public improvements authorized by the act. I think Tom's going to touch on that with you, kind of the idea that we're focusing on roads, water, sewer, and parks at this point, but there may be other elements that are permitted in the statute that you all will want to include. The costs related to the financing are also permitted, and then costs related to the establishment of the district and administration of the district. Thad was going over that last time, that the assessments pay not only for the cost of the project, but also pay for the cost of administering the district so that the town is not burdened from a cost perspective on the creation of or the administration of the district. And so on the, when you flip to the second page, as I mentioned earlier, we've got blanks in there for the costs. We're working sort of to put the full list of projects together, and we'll refine that, and when the petition is submitted, of course, included the actual cost number. Questions for Tom, Thad, and me?
Questions from the board. I have a staff question I wanted to ask. Brian Bruce Beck, I'm wondering, because we contract with the county to collect our taxes, and I saw that in the budget, of course, the, is, what is our expectation about what's going to happen to that relationship if the SAD is implemented?
Well, we, my recommendation would be that we continue to contract with the county for that, if the county would be willing to. Intergovernmental agreement, I think, on some, on some level, if we're comfortable. If, if we were to go in that direction, and the county were agreeable, that's all we can do. We currently have, where we call and collect our own taxes, we could, you know, we could certainly, we can certainly have some staff time and involvement in terms of administering the district from our own end, in coordination with the county. But as far as the actual collection, I think that would have to continue.
Sorry, go ahead, finish, Brian. I'm sorry, I was gonna.
I was just wondering if that was the question.
Yeah, but given that, and given what you're just told us about the costs relating to the establishment administration, does that mean that, that whatever charges the county assesses to us by virtue of that relationship, and our own administrative costs, would be reimbursable through the SAD then?
That's right. And so from a precedent standpoint, Hillsborough and Mooresville both have intergovernmental agreements, as Brian mentioned, with Orange County and Iredale County respectively. And those agreements lay out the county's responsibility to collect the assessments. And it almost always, in these districts around the country, the way the assessment is billed, is billed on the tax bill, because it's the most consistent way of collection. You're not, you know, you're not sending to your homeowners or your commercial landowners separate bills that could be confused, or lost, or remain unpaid. So you run it all together with separate line items, and the county would collect that in the ordinary course. I think I mentioned to you last time, the way those intergovernmental agreements have worked in the past, though, is that the county doesn't accept enforcement responsibility over the assessments. And so that it would be the city's responsibility to enforce assessments to the extent they're unpaid. But typically, those get paid on a, on the same level, or very close to the same level as the other ones, percentage-wise. And Mayor, from a cost standpoint, both the Orange and Iredale agreements with Hillsborough and Mooresville have a built-in holdback for, for the county. So they collect and they keep a small, very small percentage to cover their costs. But the assessment, and Thad, you can speak to this, but the administrative costs built into the assessment would cover both city and county costs, presumably.
Yeah.
So whatever, so what you do is budget for on an annual basis. So to the extent, as Brian said, if it takes additional staff time, or an additional staff member, or, you know, depending on how large districts become, not this particular one, but if you have to staff for it, or, and in the case of the county, sometimes they have to buy special software to deal with it. In those cases, it's all covered by, including that in the overall assessment. So the town or the county doesn't have to come out of pocket.
Great. Okay.
Yeah, that's a question. I'm starting with one question. At what point would the, would there assessment be in place, if it has been approved, so forth and so on? When would you start accumulating, accumulating, and then expect those funds to be dispersed?
Sure. Thanks for having me, Thad Wilson, for the recap. The expectation is that as soon as a district gets created, and the assessments are levied, that's the process we've been talking about, your district is, is live, it's operational. And on a once-a-year basis, we will bill assessments to parcels. There, there are many rules in place that, you know, prevent the billing of assessments if no dollars have been spent on public improvements. But in this case, we have, you know, many, many thousands, millions of dollars have already been spent. So the anticipation is that when the first year mark comes around, we will bill assessments. So let's put a kind of example in place. If this district was created later in 2018, as we rolled into 2019, and we were moving towards those dates by which the county will bill real property taxes, the town would approve an update to the assessment role, a calculation of the assessment billing. The town would either have staff members do that, or hire an outside assessment consultant to do that work. That would generate an annual billing, which would literally be a dollar amount per parcel that's in the district. And those dollar amounts would be, you know, listed in a relatively simple form, probably in an Excel file, ultimately would be approved by the town, passed along to the county. So one answer to your question is, if the district was created later this year, we would start billing assessments as early as next year.
What will we have?
Yeah. Now, when you bill assessments, it's a different, slightly more complicated answer as to how you go about billing assessments between developed property and undeveloped property. Happy to talk more about that, if you'd like. But all parcels will be subject to assessments, and all likelihood, we'll be billing parcels that are in their final form. We do not have any houses out there yet. We have some commercial property that will be in the district. What you will see in practice is effectively a slow ramp up in the quantity of assessments billed, as more and more houses, more and more property tracks are subsequently created across Chatham Park.
I ask you, that's one of the things, in your answer, you were talking about groups that would prepare the, do the paperwork. That's one of the things that UniCap does.
Yeah, so my firm, UniCap, we, we work around the country. We have a practice helping organize and create, establish these districts. That's what I'm here doing right now. Separate part of my company works as administrators of districts. So we are one of the firms, few firms, because it's just such a weird, tiny, special little niche that we're in. We are one of the firms that towns and counties across the country hire as their assessment consultant. To the extent this district got created, the town would go through a process to hire a firm to, more likely than not, the town would go through a process to hire a firm to serve as its assessment consultant. To repeat what's already been said, all of those costs would be paid for by the assessment revenue.
Can you talk a little bit more about, say, there were some, about billing parcels which are not?
Yeah, so as a general practice, what happens across the country is, is you make a distinction between developed property and undeveloped property. And I think most everybody in this room knows what that means, kind of in practice, or I'm sorry, in reality. There's a huge amount of undeveloped lands in Chatham Park. As parcels take their kind of final shape, you know, literally a 70-by-100 single-family home, or a half-acre commercial tract, they, they reach a point where they're really using the public improvements, where in the language of special assessments, they're receiving special benefit from the public improvements. So what you see in normal course is a distinction between how you build property that's still undeveloped versus how you build property that's developed. And ultimately, that leads to effectively a full billing of assessments on an annual basis to developed property, and a gradual diminished or delayed billing of assessments to undeveloped property. It, all that ultimately gets captured, written down, literally by formulas, in documents that will be approved by this, this board, or a board in general, at the final assessment resolution step. So that will be one of the pieces of work that will need to be accomplished over the coming months, to literally write all those formulas down, explain in greater detail to you how those assessment bills will be calculated every year, and pass along to the property owners.
And what about the disbursement?
So disbursement, I think what you mean is, is actually, once the revenue's collected, how does it, right? So, great question. I'll start with the reality of, in the early years, before any public bond or borrowing has been put in place, which is really, you know, where we sit right now. We have a district, they've spent millions of dollars on public improvements. As the dollars are billed to property owners, collected by the county, transferred from the county back to the town, then those dollars are available for reimbursement of public improvements back to the developer. Now, before those dollars can be paid as reimbursements for public improvements that have already been built and paid for, all the administrative costs are going to get paid for, there's going to be a higher priority. So all the town costs for that whole year are going to be set aside to pay for administrative costs of the districts. To the extent there are other collections available, those can be dispersed for reimbursement for completed public improvements that have been demonstrated to the town's satisfaction. What I mean by that is invoices, approval of the work, deeding of the public, of the improvement over to a public body, meaning they have to become a publicly owned asset. But to the extent all that's done, and that happens in normal course, because roads are built, and they become public roads, and sewer lines are built, they become public sewer lines. To the extent that's happened, dollars have been spent, invoices have been approved, work's been approved to town or county of appropriate standard, then those become effectively reimbursable expenses. And to the extent assessment revenues have been collected and are available for dispersment, they would be dispersed. That would probably happen on a quarterly or semi-annual basis. You probably wouldn't want to write those checks all too often. It could happen monthly. But the reality is, you're going to get most of those assessment revenue dollars once a year from the county, because people pay them at a regular, at a regular time. To the extent there is a public bond that's been issued, so, you know, fast forward to three, five, seven, eight years from now, and Chatham Park has been built out, and there are hundreds of homes out there, maybe thousands of homes out there, and a borrowing has been That public borrowing will have effectively second rights on the assessment revenues, again, behind administrative costs. So assessment revenues will be collected, administrative costs will be paid, remaining assessment revenue dollars will be made available to the bond trustee to pay debt service on the bonds. Theoretically, if assessment revenues were strong enough to pay administrative costs, bond, debt service, make sure all that was taken care of, then if there were additional assessment revenues in that year, those also could be dispersed for any reimbursements that had not previously been reimbursed. So it's a, in the term of RWEs, it's a waterfall of uses, starting at the top with administrative costs. If there's debt service that has second priority, then after that, if there's still assessment revenues to be dispersed, you could reimburse additionally for other projects. What are those?
Oh, no, I think one, one purpose you may do a bond, I mean, at this point, as Thad mentioned, the Chatham Park developers have spent many millions of dollars to build stuff out to this point. But you may, to accelerate a particular portion in the various streets and water sewer, whatever, you may want to issue a bond, 10 million, 20 million, whatever the number would be, to go ahead and put money in the coffers to, to actually pay for those projects, rather than to reimburse the developer. That would be the reason you might do a bond over just a pure reimbursement situation.
We're not talking about bonds at this point.
We're not talking about bonds at this point.
Okay.
Okay. One other question. In the draft, for the example of a special assessment district, it entices, which I was not aware of, the construction and establishment of trails, bike, biking, and so forth and so on. I did not know that that was included in the special assessment district. Is that how it is, and the one that you all worked on in Hillsborough?
Oh, in Hillsborough, I, there may have been some trails in Hillsborough. It's a little bit different development. It's not quite all encompassing. And the one in Mooresville is very small, and there actually is a little bit of green space that was paid for, but green spaces clearly, and hiking trails, et cetera, clearly permitted uses in the statute, so.
And then it also entices other public improvements. What has other been included?
Yes, I'd like to say, what's in there today? There are two things. One's in there today, and then what is possible. So what we had, and this was part of what I showed two weeks ago, we have the major arterial roads, Chatham Parkway, U-Banks, some of the larger four-lane roads. We have the trunk lines for water and sewer that are, that go in with the roads, parallel to the roads. And then the, so those were three of the categories, the roads, the water, the sewer, only the arterial roads and the trunk lines. And then the other items we had were trails. So we were putting the trail system in as part of the special assessment district. And the last item was the engineering costs associated with the water, the sewer, the roads, and the trails. So this is kind of saying that there may be some attachments to that, but those were the four things we were trying to cover.
I'd add to that, you know, sometimes these documents, really for everybody's benefit, you write not only this document, but many of these with flexibility. And what you really are trying to accomplish is, obviously to your satisfaction, but you don't want to box yourself out of it being smarter later. You want to have some flexibility in this document that if the town, two or three or five years from now decides, you know, something, and everybody can agree to, it would be something people have to agree to, you want to have some flexibility. But in general, what Tom's getting at here is, we know this is the process, and we're trying to create some language there that helps us move along and get some agreement in place.
So what would be the prompt, then, if I'm going to add something else?
Well, importantly, the state statute, Joe can help me here, he's the attorney, but the state statute requires you to be pretty darn specific at this stage in getting a petition up, and that is our goal. We're trying to understand what we should get in there to the best of our ability.
So I'd say two things. One is, as Thad said, there are certain, there's a dozen, a few dozen items that are eligible within the, within the special assessment district legislation. So I can send everyone the list. So it has a, and it's just a defined list. So if it's not on the list, it can't be in the district. If it is in the list, it can be. So that's one answer to say, from a legal perspective. More specifically, the reason we put this draft together was to say to you, when you look at this list, we've talked about different things that you might want to add to the list, and this is really the time to say, here are the ideas we'd like you to consider if you want to increase this list, add something to this list. So that's really part of the reason of putting the petition together, is to invite your thinking about what should be on the list of this. And then obviously, we would check to make sure it could be on the list based on the law.
Question?
Might just be a staff issue, too, but I just wondered if the county weighed in on the, I'm sorry, this just came up in the last meeting, I wasn't thinking of it, I'm just wondering if the, if the county does.
Can I address that? One of the reasons we're here is that the county asked us to get your responses to the concept of the special assessment district. So in those conversations that we've had with some of you, there was a desire to look at the town being the sponsor of the district, rather than the county. So this is consistent with the county's invitation to us, or instruction to us, to come to the town and see what was the town's pleasure regarding the special assessment district. So they are expecting, realize, say, we love it, go forward with it, we hate it, don't do it, or we want to take it over ourselves. So, you know, you have, those are the options, and right now, we're just exploring the option of you taking over yourself. Even if you said, hey, we want the county to do it, we would be following the same process.
Yeah, I think what I said, stay there, is that they're very similar processes. It is a, it's a separate statute for the county, but the, but they're remarkably consistent. So we would be walking through the same work.
And given that the land is ultimately going to be in the town, the town's approval would be required under the county statute. So we're needing to talk about that.
I'm curious about the, I appreciate the point about wanting to build in some flexibility for unforeseeable opportunities in the future. But I'm curious about the, what mechanism there is for cost control on things like engineering, acquisition, rights of way, and other real property interests?
Yeah, so, good question. Take engineering, you know, first. You know, the, A, it's got to be an invoice rights, it's got to be, it's got to be the real cost. There's a, there's an expectation, really reliance upon the developers for spending the money. They still have a, a strong interest in not overpaying for work. So they're not, their goals are similar to if they were just building these improvements on their own, on their own nickel. So there's an expectation that they're still spending the dollars early on. In terms of land costs, the rights of way that are needed for roads, water, sewer lines, parks, and trails, those have to be purchased at effectively, or the value that you could use assessments to fund for that real property value of the land, has to be appraised through a normal MAI approval process. And the developer can't just say, it's worth a million dollars an acre, so it has to go through an approval process to, you know, technical and scientific, and obviously has to meet your, your approval as well. So there, there are built-in mechanisms to make sure all those costs are appropriate. I mentioned it earlier, you know, to the extent that they're spending money on design, engineering, and before those costs can be reimbursed, they have to be spent, meaning they have to be incurred, they have to be paid for, they have to be approved, invoices have to be shown, to the extent the town has an interest in studying those, and having your own engineer or third-party look at them, all that can be done, and it's just done in some regularity of the district. So there's plenty of process there. So, there's plenty of process there to keep them, keep them straight.
One of the things that's reflected in the proposal we're making is that we are not showing Chatham Park staff or overhead in these numbers. So, these are all just checks that are written to contractors or engineers who are third-party providers of either the engineering or the construction of, of these improvements.
Further questions, Sean, or Michael seems to have some here.
And you just, the response to John's question, I've got my gears rolling on the idea of acquisition of right of way for public improvements. Presently, the situation is that Chatham Park owns all the property and is going to dedicate right of way for roadways, going to build the roadways, dedicate those facilities to the town. But that would be the normal course of action for any developer. But you're starting to make me believe that that would not be the normal course in the special assessment district, that in fact, the town would then, or the folks associated with the assessment would actually purchase that right of way.
The assessment district that, what Dad is describing is the overall state policies and legislation. But what we've reflected in our special assessment district is simply the third-party costs. Now, one thing I think is really, I think there's one fundamental that I think is important to keep in mind, which is that with a, with a real estate development project like this, whether it's land or construction or anything, the developer has to pass the cost on to the purchasers. So, if it's acreage that is dedicated, if it's acreage that we paid for, that then is given to make a road, it's still an investment we have to recoup. And so, we either recoup that in the purchase price of the lot, or we recoup that in the special assessment district. So, there's not a scenario where the customers are not reimbursing costs, it's just how they reimburse costs, it's just a fundamental. However, in this particular instance, the district that we're designing, the numbers that I showed two weeks ago, were just third-party construction costs and did not include right-of-way costs.
Back to the very first comment about the lien status, would this be the equivalent to a tax lien?
So, the statute provides that only tax liens are superior to this lien, so it comes in just behind. So, and it also provides a foreclosure process for enforcement. So, you foreclose it like you would a tax lien. You essentially set up a tax sale, and proceeds from the sale would first go off to pay taxes and then to pay assessments and then any other lien.
You were mentioning earlier about the bonds, posting bonds. Now, would it be possible to post a bond to accelerate repayment in the district?
Yeah, so, yes, it would. I think at this point, the Chatham Park developers are not asking for that, but that's certainly a scenario. That's, both Mooresville and Millsburg, they issued bonds, the towns did.
And they're, they issued bonds to generate the revenue tax within the project, whereas this is a different scenario where the developer provided funding.
That's right.
But it is, it is possible that there could be, you know, A, a series of bond issuances. I mean, this is obviously a huge project, it's going to take many, many years. So, there are scenarios where early bonds are reimbursement dollars, medium-term bonds are partially reimbursement, partially new money for projects, maybe later bonds are only for new projects. So, we're trying to create flexibility on that. As a general rule, there is a bond market for these securities, meaning bond investors will invest in these tools because you do have this lien, this equivalent, almost equivalent of a tax lien, that if the land is worth it, there's a reason to believe assessments will get paid. In practice, you need some development, right? So, you need, you need houses and buildings up there, you want to sell bonds when you have a significant amount of the necessary assessment revenue coming from developed property. What does significant mean? It changes, you don't want to, it's harder to sell these bonds when you have new homes there, it's easier to sell bonds when your district is built up.
And again, to emphasize, they're describing what is possible. We are not looking to issue bonds. We might in the future, in the future, we might revisit this, but at this point in time, we're not. So, this will not allow for us to issue bonds, we'd have to come back and have a separate discussion.
A separate discussion.
So, I didn't want to confuse this, have you thinking, this is about bonds as well. This is very straightforward, where Chatham Park is putting in the money to build the structure and being repaid by the assessments over time. So, we may revisit that, but when we do, that'll be a separate discussion that you would be in.
What makes a, what characteristics of a property may it eligible to be considered a non-benefited property? Last time we were here, you, you mentioned the idea, we, the question was about nonprofits, and it was a distinction between publicly-owned property not being subject to the assessment, but a nonprofit may be deemed to be non-benefited.
Right. Joe, help me a little bit. So, in practice, what you find is publicly-owned parcels and often public-use parcels, such as a utility, can be reasonably determined to be non-benefited from the improvements, meaning you can put forth a logic for a utility, could be a privately-owned utility, but that it's a public use and that you can reason that it is not benefited. So, in practice, what you find, most assessment districts do not allocate assessments to a parcel that's owned by the federal government, that's owned by the town, that's owned by the county, that's owned by a utility.
Or the state.
Or the state, thank you. I don't know if there's a North Carolina ruling on the matter, a familiar point in South Carolina where churches, for example, were determined to be subject to special assessments. And that's kind of one that people kind of wrap their heads around pretty easily. But I'm unsure if there's a North Carolina statute on that. But in practice, in practice, utilities, publicly-owned parcels are determined to be non-benefited, but most, everything else I can think of.
Yeah, a line C.A. or a goodwill office, or, they would be subject to the assessment typically, unless there were some extension process they applied for, a DLR were awarded to them, but that would be.
Another one that gets a little bit of interest sometimes is Property Owners Association property, and that's handled differently by different states and by county-county bond councils, people that look at these things for a living and make the determinations or opinions of seeing relatively diverse determinations on whether property owners associations. I think the best logic is property owners associations are non-benefited, and I think that works the best in the marketplace, it certainly works the best in the, in the expectation of who can pay, because property owners associations typically are, are not.
It's effectively increasing the homeowners.
It's effectively a secondary way to push it to the homeowner. So, we typically set them up so that P.O.A.-owned property is considered non-benefited as well. I think that probably works.
But in most districts, I mean, and you can speak to this, but most districts are predominantly benefited property. There are, you know, pieces, donate holes around that are not benefited from time to time, but for the most part, they're benefited property.
I'll add one other thought, you know, sometimes you have a, you might have a property owners association parcel, or you might even have a, you know, I guess I call it a privately-owned parcel, that's a lot of green space. So, the allocation to that parcel that is privately-owned, but it's largely green space is that there's not a single painting in there, there's not an office building there, so we go through your assessment methodology, try to figure out how much assessment burden to put on that parcel. If it's got some easement or restriction or requirement that it never has vertical construction on it, the outcome of the assessment methodology is likely going to generate no assessment allocated to it, it's not going to have a building on it. So, very often, there, not very often, there are examples of a privately-owned green space that does not get an assessment letting, that's not not benefited, it just doesn't have, doesn't have a structure on it.
Does it have to have a structure on it?
It doesn't, but typically, when you allocate assessments, you're trying to figure out a, you're, you're following a methodology that attempts to apportion assessments in a reasonable manner, and in your typical tools to apportion them are judging quantity of structures that are built. Doesn't have to be that, but more often than not, you're, you're judging square footage or types of homes that are going to be built when you apportion assessments. There are districts where you can apportion assessments strictly on acreage or on frontage, but those are limited, and most people would probably, upon kind of detailed review, figure out that the outcome of apportioning assessments on acreage or frontage is not, not the best approach.
When does the assessment become a requirement or obligation, is it upon occupancy of some structure or?
Yeah, so, we, I, yeah, so, I like to say it this way, you know, if the creation of what we're generally calling a district, what we're really doing is we're levying an assessment on parcels. So, there is an original levy of full assessment on a parcel. That happens through this process, through the final assessment resolution, through this council's approval. So, at that point in time, parcel has an assessment levy on it. The second concept you have to keep in mind is when you build. So, the billing of assessments is really billing of a portion of that total assessment that's been levied, and you will have in front of you, when we write it, billing formulas that will demonstrate distinctions between parcels at different phases of their life, raw land, parcel that is in its final form, maybe it's a building permit, something that gets to that stage of development, and when it gets to that stage of development, you'll have a different billing formula than when it is raw land. But parcels have assessments right out of the gate, that's the full levy on it. When that parcel's subdivided into smaller parcels, you allocate assessments to the smaller parcels, bill assessments on an annual basis according to formulas. What you're billing is that total amount over some number of years, and ultimately, you're going to build that parcel the full amount. But when you subdivide a parcel, that's when you allocate a certain amount down to the child parcel.
So, let's say we've got two lots. One of them, so both would have an assessment established.
Right.
One of them builds in year one.
Yep.
And gets occupied and starts paying.
Right.
Over some period of time.
Right.
The other one gets built in year 10.
Right.
Does it start paying its assessment the very first year and equal, make equal payments over 20, some odd years of the bullet? Or is that 20-year period now prorated so that upon its first billing, it's paying the 10 years?
Yeah, so, short answer is a lot of it's going to come to you. We got to write it all down, I've got to give it to you. The question is, it's more complex than I, than I need to work with giving me an example. But you're right on the first one. It gets a building permit, it's in its final form, it's going to get builder in the next 25 years. The other parcel, which is probably not a lot, it's probably a big undeveloped tract, that large parcel is going to be further subdivided. It, in my mind, would likely pay a little bit in the early years, a small amount, but it's still undeveloped, and when it kicks out into another 20 single-family lots, there's resulting parcels that come out of the subdivision. The expectation I have, again, to be presented to you to work through all the details, that is, single-family lots that are created in year two or year six through year 10, each one of those will have its own 25-year billing cycle. The parent parcel from which it came, it will have its own cycle, but when it creates new parcels out of it, the new parcels that are created will have, each will have its own 25-year cycle.
Is that 25 years, is that the max?
That is the max, Rex. So, that you can bill assessments to a parcel 25 years. That, for what it's worth, that's an interesting, I think it's kind of a quirk to the state law, most other states don't set that limit, but in North Carolina, you have, you can have 25 installments, you know, bill, bill.
Do you think that this is such a large development, and we're going to be seeing the north area develop first and the south being somewhat later in the, in the Hina thing? Is, is this methodology divisible for the north-north and south portions of Chatham Park?
Yes, I'll let Tom answer that, but, but generally, could be.
What we're proposing is that we create a district just for the north, and then, at some point in the future, when the south is closer to development, we would then revisit how the south would be in a separate district.
Other further questions? We're coming up on the seven o'clock hour.
I do have questions, those questions, they could go long after the seven o'clock hour, so I'll just, I will, I think, go offline and email you some more questions. But one of the uses that I'm interested in including in order to analyze the special assessment district, we can have affordable housing.
What we would like is for, to get from you, collectively, the list of things you'd like us to look at, so that we can come back with an amended version of this draft and address those issues. So, we've heard affordable housing, and that is allowable under the regulation of, the legislation regulating districts, special assessment districts. I don't know if tonight anyone has other things they would want us to study, but we would like to be able to come back with an amended draft petition that maybe included whatever items you thought we needed to study, and we could evaluate those and get back to you.
Certainly fire and clean. Fire and.
Facilities for fire.
Facilities, yeah. We can tell you about other facilities, additional element, and certainly, I think, those are major concerns.
And I think the fire stations were not impossible within the district. I think that was, that's one of the things that's not possible in the district.
Yeah, we'll.
That's right. And, but, you know, we will, we will, give us, give us your ideas, and we'll evaluate whether it's possible and if possible, how we might address them. Thank you very much. We'd like to come back with the rise one.
I have one more right now. In terms of the preliminary assessment rule that you have to go through in the process, once that has been completed and you, someone purchases the lot, do you have to go back and do that assessment and the next, since you've changed ownership, you don't have to go back and do that?
The preliminary assessment rule in Joe's list will be approved by the council at what we call kind of the current list of parcels, if you look on page two of your petition there, draft petition, it lists the current parcels. That might, it might not change in the next three or four months, probably is not going to change greatly. But as new parcels are created, we're going to allocate assessments to them. That's kind of normal course, a big lots turn, sorry, a big piece of land turned into 30 parcels, you allocate down to those. Your specific question, do you do anything when it changes hands, the answer is that you allocate, when parcels are subdivided, ownership does not affect allocation, you don't update the role the parcel has an assessment on, it doesn't matter who answers it.
I trust that the lien would be recorded in the register of deeds, so when you buy a house, if it has a lien on it, you either get the lien removed or you accept the lien or the existing tax lien, and you accept the existing testable lien you paid according to the schedule.
Have you said that? When people buy houses at Chatham Park, they are going to sign disclosures to acknowledge that they are buying a house with a special assessment on. It makes no sense to allow people to buy houses with that, so we're going to have a very strong process, going to have a lot of people to put, including all of us, to have that disclosure and acknowledgement. Thank you all.
Thank you. I'm calling to order the meeting of the Town of Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners on Monday, June 25, 2018. And we'll open our meeting with a moment's time. Jay Farrell, we use.
Certainly. Name of the ras, the pledge. Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to take a moment, if I might, to introduce, for those of you who have not attended meetings before, to introduce ourselves and also to introduce staff, including a new staff member we have with us tonight. And so if you don't mind, I'll start by simply saying, I'm Cindy Perry, I am the mayor of Pittsburgh, retired real estate attorney, and have been on the board, been mayor about three years. John, would you like to go next, and we'll introduce ourselves and then Seth?
I'm John Lott, I'm here. Also, I've served about two, two, three quarters years.
My name is Pamela Baldwin, and I am commissioner, as well as mayor of Co-Town, and I've been that role for, since 2005.
Michael Fiocco, small business owner, have been on the board since 2009.
I'm Beth Wilson-Foley, also commissioner, and I'm on my second term, I'm in those six and a half years.
Good afternoon, I'm Jay Farrell. Of course, I'm a town commissioner. I've been on the board six, below six years, and I have a restaurant in downtown Pittsburgh and born and raised here.
Thank you. Staff, of course, tonight, Ryan Bruce Beck, our town manager, Alice Coro Lloyd, our town clerk, our town attorney, Paul Messick, and our police chief, Percy Cratchit. Gathered throughout the audience tonight, Parks and Rec Director Paul Horn, planning staff director is Jeff Jones, and planner two, Victoria Bayless. And I'm pleased to introduce to you tonight Elizabeth Goodson. Today is her very first day as our new town engineer. All right. Do you have the agenda before you? Is there a motion to modify the agenda or approve the agenda? This is the full agenda, not the briefing.
Madam Mayor, I have just one, couple of questions on the main street agreement. I find that we could just move that temporary to, at least a new business is accurate. That'd be fine.
We're separating the motion to approve the regular agenda, and then we'll do a motion for the consent agenda. So is there a motion to approve the regular agenda with the one item of moving item two on consent to new business number one? Move by Beth Wilson-Foley, seconded by Michael Fiocco, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed. Motion carries now. As to the consent agenda, items one through, one, three, and four, are there any questions or discussion about those items that not entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as a new?
We'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended, also including the corrections to the minutes that have been discussed.
Move by Michael Fiocco.
Second.
Seconded by John Lott, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed. Motion carries now. We have three public hearings on the agenda this evening. Is there a motion to go into public hearing? Move by Pamela Walden, seconded by Michael Fiocco, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed. Motion carries now. Jeff Jones is going to lead us in a discussion of public utilities, with service and storage yards.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm Michael Ford. Tonight we have zoning text amendment 2018-03, and as for public utilities and service storage yards, Duke Progress Energy is requesting an amendment to our committed use table to allow for public utilities with service and storage yards to be, essentially allowed by right in all zoning districts except currently C2 is a special use permit. In the C2, in the proposal from Duke, the C2 zoning district would continue to be a special use permit under their proposal. Generally, staff is in favor of Duke Progress's amendment, along with being committed in all the districts as outlined in their proposal. There would be some caveats that development would have to meet. If there was a public utility substation or utilities with service and storage yards located in R15, R12M, R12, and R10, there would be a one-acre lot minimum. Public utility was located in O and I, C1 and C4, there would be a half-acre minimum lot size. And then in RA, RA2, and RA5, there would be a five-acre minimum lot size. Additionally, the proposal is to enclose the facility with security fence, not less than six feet in height, and in addition, there would be an opaque screen, not less than six feet, at the time of planting, where it develops a residential lot. And so Duke Progress Energy is proposing to build a utility substation in town at some point in the future. With growth of Chatham Park and growth in general, there is a need for more utilities, and particularly electric utilities from Duke Progress. They have identified some property that they would like to do this in, and that property is currently zoned RA2. There's been some staff discussion with Duke Progress as to is that allowed use under current zoning ordinance? Our current zoning ordinance, if you see on the screen, screenshot from Duke's request, that there is two public utility use types, one with service and storage yards and one without. The staff has interpreted that public utility service, public utilities with service and storage yards to be something of a larger scale. This is what that type of facility, the first, the top two are examples that Duke provided to staff as to what they would like to build in our jurisdiction at some point in time. And then the bottom one is where is a current public utility along Pittsburgh Moncur Road that is a Duke Progress public utility substation. Staff finds that these are only allowed in M1 and M2 and C2 through a special use permit. How do we get it moved forward and potentially allow for these things to be somewhere other than M1 and M2, C2 is a special use permit? That would be a text amendment change that Duke has requested. So I read through their proposal, and I'm generally in favor of the proposal. I think that it's a little, I don't think we want these types of facilities in our downtown area or in our residentially zoned areas of 10,000 square foot lots. So I've, I've come back with a proposal that would limit these, these types of facilities, again, to the M1 and 2, as they currently are, and then to the RA district, the RA2 district, and the RA5 district with five-acre minimum lot size. And then the screening that's been proposed by Duke, that would go along with that. Think that would be a good compromise, because we have a lot of area in town that is zoned RA, RA2, RA5, that Duke or other public utilities could locate something like this in our jurisdiction. The applicant is here, we can answer any questions that you have, but it's really the whole public hearing tonight, and hear from either applicant or others as they may wish to speak.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
If we were to approve a package in some of these residential districts, could we also include a significant buffer between, between these facilities and residence?
So I, I think how we've advertised it, as, we would, we would probably want to go back and address that, that buffering issue under a separate advertised amendment. The way staff has sort of went with the proposal, staff's proposal, is that we could go down, not, we could allow less districts and the buffering is the same, and the acreage is the same that's currently being requested. So if we wanted to go do something else, we'd have to go back and advertise.
So this would not be subject to a building setback?
I think if it's on a five-acre lot size, then it's more than likely going to be a building, there's going to be a building setback, but, yeah, I mean, that's part of the site plan process, we look at that.
But it's not a building, so there wouldn't be a building setback. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking what, after, is getting it far enough away from our property lot, and I think the only way to do that is with a buffer, because unless that has a big building on, the building.
Some of them do, I think, the upper left-hand one on the screen, or maybe it's the right-hand one, it's just off of the edge of the picture. There is actually a small building there.
But I think the part that people would, would see as purpose would not be the building that they want the buffer from, it'd be from the electrical.
But, I mean, generally, we're talking not 50 feet front buffer, 30 feet rear, maybe 25 side buffer, side setbacks for a structure.
That can be a structure.
Yeah.
Okay. That solar form, there was some question about, what defines a structure? I just wondered, just, solar panels are a structure, why would this be a structure?
I think it looks like a difference in setting.
That may be a different interpretation that we have to make.
Or at some point, the floor area, gross square footage of floor area.
No, I don't see that. But that's, that's an element discussion and not a town zoning ordinance discussion.
Yeah, but it's something, is that what we're thinking about?
So tonight we have signed up for this public hearing. Micah Rechlofs from Duke Progress. Micah, did you want to address the report or answer any questions from the?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the time this evening, members of the board. My name is Micah Rechlofs, I am with Duke Energy Progress, address is 411 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. Essentially, we're just here to, to answer any questions about the request. Generally, we also agree with staff's recommended changes, we don't have any concerns about those. This is really just an effort to assist us with appropriate and more options for citing these types of facilities as the need arises.
And Mike, may I ask you a question about the opaque screen?
Yes, ma'am.
If it's six feet in height at the time of planting, I'm just wondering, is this going to be something that's going to later have to be interfering with the electric, electric lines coming in and out of the facility?
Generally not. You know, most of our transmission lines that connect to these facilities are, you know, a little higher than the six-foot planning height, and certainly much higher than, you know, most of your plantings in this area that even at mature status. I, I think, you know, we certainly could work with staff, find, you know, native species that are more appropriate for the Chatham area, Pittsburgh area. Certainly, we do have to be cognizant of some of the plantings out there that do reach heights that could potentially interfere, but we can certainly mitigate those as well by running some distribution lines, especially our distribution lines, the ones that are actually going out and providing the service to the, in customer, have options like alternate poles, perhaps some undergrounding. We don't generally find that the landscaping is a danger to the facility.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there other questions?
The two sites that are on Pittsburgh Moncur Road, what are the, was there acres there? Do you have any idea?
You know, it looked to me, especially the one here on the right, is more of our standard, current standard.
Both of those, do you can't.
So the one on the bottom is a current facility in town. The two are just examples of what Duke might propose in, somewhere in the region to serve their needs. The one at the bottom is probably a couple acres maybe, and then the co-op one next to it maybe is three acres or so, it's a little bit bigger than the co-op.
I just wanted to, um.
They're bigger.
One necessary for five acres, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Sir, one necessary for five acres. Is that just?
Yeah, I think that was a proposal by Duke to sort of mitigate any potential issues with neighbors in the area, that if they do have at least five acres of land, they could mitigate the site by placing it somewhat as, as the land lays, but in the center of the site to mitigate that area, and that's why the buffering would be there. So I believe that's the intent, Micah, if you could speak to that.
And Commissioner Farrell, that's, that's correct. You know, generally, we have lots of rules and requirements that govern these stations, not least of which are some of our stormwater regulations, other buffering requirements that have to do with, say, federal requirements. So certainly, you know, five acres to me would become our minimum size that we would try to acquire. That, as Mr. Jones mentioned, you know, we're going to essentially place these, maximize separation to any off-site uses, and have plenty of space available for planted buffers. As the mayor had mentioned about the six-foot tree, I mean, or planting, you know, that's, that's not concerning the width of the plantings. We may have multiple six-foot plantings in order to create that opaque buffer.
Other questions for Micah?
When locating these facilities, which comes first? This substation? Call it a substation? Or the overhead utility lines?
Usually it's the substation. You know, the substation really drive, is driven by the need, the load need. What our distribution planners will identify as a place on the map, usually it's, it's kind of similar to some of your other development requirements, you'll have a certain.
Other questions for Micah?
When locating these facilities, which comes first? This substation, call it a substation, or the overhead utility lines?
Usually it's the substation. You know, the substation really drive, is driven by the need, the load need, what our distribution planners will identify as a place on the map. Usually it's, it's kind of similar to some of your other development requirements, you'll have a, a service center, some kind of radius from that center, and theoretically anywhere within that circle of area search, if we place the station, you would be able to push out the distribution feeders to all the, the potential load needs or existing load needs in that area. And, and as far as the transmission connectivity goes, we have to have both A and B. We know which transmission line we're going to connect to, once we have the substation site located, then we're able to determine the connecting paths.
So an existing overhead facility is not going to dictate where this plan, this substation needs to be, it can be offset by two acres?
Yeah, I mean, I think generally yes.
So, I don't know the language, but power lines, the occasion of a very giant.
Yes, ma'am.
So a station like that could have a giant power line, the ones that, you know, you would, would that be something that might be in the areas?
And, and yes, ma'am, that's absolutely, you know, when you consider these types of facilities, in order to energize the substation, we would be bringing in what's called the transmission line. So that transmission line or the taller structures you see, sometimes those have, you know, the, the wires are slightly larger than what you see distributed into the home. These substations, the purpose of these substations, some of the, the electrical functionings that are, the equipment in there, its function is actually to transform the electricity from some of these higher voltages down to a more reasonable lower voltage that can then be transmitted to your home. And then outside of your home, generally, you'll either have a pole-mounted transformer on a utility pole, or one of those ground-mounted pad transformers, which then will step down to the energy even more so that you're able to use a hair dryer, or prefer to a hair, whatever else the end customer needs.
Mr. Reisler, could you help me understand the interplay between these kinds of facilities and distributed generating assets? Solar field?
Uh, you know, I wish I had an engineer to do that, that would be better. You know, with the solar farms and their generating capacity, you know, that energy is usually integrated into our network, either through the transmission systems, those larger, you know, heavier duty lines, or the distribution systems. Generally, there, there are two different types of facilities. The transmission solar facilities will be those very, very large, you know, stations you see out in, in more rural areas, you know, generally accommodating 50-plus acres. The distribution facilities are usually quite smaller. I mean, these may be some of the, the more, the technology you see on the horizon where folks will have just a small solar set on their buildings, their homes. Grocery stores now are freeing up some of their roof space for these facilities, and those generally will be pushed in into the distribution system. As far as kind of direct connectivity, I think maybe is what you're looking for for some of these substations. We usually don't have those solar facilities directly integrating their generated power into these types of substations. They'll get into the distribution or the transmission grid and, and kind of, you know, reach the end customers through that, those kinds of facilities, not necessarily through our substation itself. Yes, sir.
That's perfect. Do you need an engineer?
I'm sure they could give a much better answer.
That's all.
Thank you, Micah.
I do have one more question, just about the, the large transmission line. Is that something, I personally would not want to live next to one of those. I'm concerned about that being in residential areas, and I'm wondering if there could be a designation between, that those kinds of large transmission facilities would be aligned into? Is that, is that what's going on? I'm concerned about those giant lines being in.
Well, there's some already existing, and, and those would be appropriate locations for the step-down, as you refer to it, is that correct?
But you said the facilities would be like 50, did I understand correctly, the facilities would be like 50 acres?
Well, that was some of the solar farms that.
Oh, okay, understood, okay.
Mr. Bowman's discussing about. I think, you know, when it comes to the transmission line connectivity, you know, whereas you see our distribution facilities, they follow long roads, they're usually routed directly in public right-of-ways. You don't see a lot of those cross-country, but the transmission facilities, you know, the, the, the most appropriate thing that, that, you know, we found, and also kind of generally directed by the Utility Commission, is the more over-country routes that get us, you know, the shortest distances is a straight line kind of concept. Obviously, we would avoid, you know, when we do the citing studies that have to do with routing those transmission lines, you know, the very first thing that we are considering are land uses, specifically residential land uses. So while there are generally zoning rules in place in most jurisdictions for the transmission lines, the Utility Commission takes up that role of ensuring that we routed those appropriately and avoiding the residential uses the best we can.
And are you anticipating building new transmission lines in our area?
Well, you know, certainly, certainly to energize the substation, that's kind of what I was saying, is that, you know, we have a, a, a transmission line kind of south of town right now, and that's, you know, the, the closest facility. We would certainly explore the other options and opportunities, but that is the nearest main line, it comes directly out of the Harris Nuclear Plant. And so, you know, you, you generally cannot energize one of these types of distribution substations without a direct connection to one of those, you know, larger transmission lines. Now, unlike distribution where you see multiple lines coming out of a substation and distributing amongst multiple small wooden poles, this is generally just a one, you know, solid line straight into the substation, and that usually delivers the power necessary to, to energize a substation as this.
I have a question regarding a security fence.
Yes, ma'am.
And you said it's not less than six feet in height. Does that ever pose a problem that it's just, that it needs to be a little higher?
Mr. Bowman, the, the main reason we chose the six-foot number is just because we're trying to maintain consistency across your, your code. I'll tell you, we're glad that the language says six feet or greater, because our facilities are usually secured with eight-foot fences. We have some requirements from federal regulations as far as security goes with these, much like any of your public utilities, your water tanks and other utility infrastructure has very specific requirements handed down from state and federal governments. Our facilities, we're, our minimum's going to be eight. You know, generally, we, we like the chain link aspect, I know that it's not visually as appealing sometimes, but it certainly accomplishes the goal of keeping, you know, most trespassers out. And in a facility like this, we certainly want to maintain the highest level of security we can. There's not a lot of stuff in that fence that you'd want to touch with your hand. Yes, ma'am.
All right, very good, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
Well, this is maybe for staff, you, whoever feels the best equipped to answer it, but I've always had the question, we've got two uses in our zoning ordinance, and there is public utilities, no service, storage yard, public utilities with storage services, storage yards. And I'm just wondering what the distinction is. I've seen tons and tons of substations that have a fence around them and they've got a gravel base, and it's a substation in the middle of it. And these, you know, they look, they're very large substations. They, in my mind, evoke the distinction between a small little neighborhood substation and this thing. But I don't know if with and without service and storage yard is the distinction, because I don't see storage anything in either of these public.
So really, that's a question for the Board of Adjustment. We have an appeal that's been filed as well, and the Board of Adjustment will have to make that determination. The staff has interpreted the ordinance that this is a public utility with service and storage yards, and the Board of Adjustment certainly could get into that. But if we amend the ordinance, that may become something that we don't have to worry about. And, and we can get into, we can, we can talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, it's kind of a difficult distinction in my mind, because I don't see either of those as having service or storage or as, as the distinguishing factor between.
It's something maybe for the UDO to sort of differentiate that, get, get, modernize that language a little bit.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Next, on items two and three for public hearings, we have Victoria Bayless leading us in a discussion of Chatham Park 5.1. The first is a subdivision application, and the second is an annexation.
Okay, this is a perimeter buffer hearing for a subdivision. Chatham Park Investors have proposed a subdivision consisting of 316 lots over an 81.4 acre site. Seventy of the lots have been proposed as townhomes. The townhomes are within 500 feet of an exterior boundary of the Chatham Park PDD and will border 908 linear feet of the adjacent property located outside of Chatham Park. The Chatham Park Master Plan states that for land uses allowed in Chatham Park that are identified as permitted by special use permit only, in the town zoning ordinance, when proposed within 500 feet of a perimeter boundary shall include proposed perimeter boundary transition treatments with the required site plan applications. In these cases, the town's review of the site plan and perimeter boundary transition treatment, treatment shall include a public hearing. The town of Pittsburgh zoning ordinance identifies townhomes as a use which requires a special use permit, and as the proposed site is within 500 feet from an exterior boundary, review of the site plan must include a public hearing. According to the Chatham Park Landscape Element, the southern border of this plan requires a 20-foot Type A buffer, which consists of four canopy trees and seven understory trees for every 100 linear feet. The developer provided some renderings of what the buffer will look like in different stages. Staff finds that the proposed perimeter boundary transition treatments meet the requirements of the Chatham Park Master Plan and Landscape Element, the recommendation is to have a public hearing.
Thank you very much. No one has signed up for this public hearing to speak and for either the perimeter buffer or for the annexation, but there's been, there are questions for Victoria. Would you like to go then to the annexation?
This is annexation 2018-01. Chatham Park Investors have proposed the annexation of approximately 17 acres located south of the US 64 bypass and just east of Tom Winkle Road, the parcel of zone PDD and is currently vacant.
You know, when you signed up for this public hearing, you've got to the board, have any questions for Victoria? That completes our public hearings. Is there a motion to go out of public hearing?
Second.
Move my Michael Biocca a second, if I'd that Wilson Foley does some favor, please indicate by saying aye. So the motion carries on. The next item is citizens' matters. There is nobody signed up for the public expression period, which hasn't happened in quite some time. So is there anyone that failed to sign up that would like to speak for three minutes on a topic? Hearing done, and we'll proceed to commissioners' updates, and usually I start this by discussing meetings I've been to recently. On the 14th of June, I attended a TARPo meeting with deals with transportation prioritizations. Both on the 16th and the 23rd, I attended Juneteenth celebrations. The 16th was in Alamance County, the 23rd was here in Chatham. On the 21st of June, I attended a Triangle J Water Resources and Growth Collaborative. I'm pleased to say that, starting in September, I will be co-chairing the Triangle J Water Resources Collaborative Meeting, along with another mayor, I believe it's the mayor of On the 21st, Ryan Grusbeck and Maria Parker Lewis and Michael Biocca. Thank you. I attended Main Street meeting here, thank you. On the 21st, also I attended in the evening hour Pittsburgh Affordable Housing Subcommittee meeting, which was very interesting. And today, before coming here this evening, I had a conference call with state government officials and water quality people and elected officials up and down the Hall River and Cape Fear watersheds to discuss 1-4 dioxide discharges and, and bromide discharges into the, into the watershed. That's just, that's just a wonderful tip of the iceberg, but we have lots of other people who serve on organizations and have attended meetings during the, during the Main Street Change Triangle J. Are there further meetings to report on?
No, I have an advertisement for this Sunday Summer Fest on the Main Street PDA. So please, everybody, attend, it's a lot of fun. You can spit some watermelon seeds if you like.
And I believe there is a meeting for volunteers, right? Is that correct? So that's on Thursday?
Thursday is volunteer night at the Roadhouse, 6:30. Come find out what you have to do. At the motion, spend two hours, maybe even just an hour.
So I'm sure everybody in this room is invited to volunteer.
And the mayor will be judging our first peach pie perfection contest.
I'm really happy to do that.
And I forgot the water slide, I said there's going to be a water slide this year. Very exciting, and a laser light show, it sounds wonderful.
And maybe it won't be too hot.
You know, we have a water slide.
Then let us proceed to old business. The first item, Victoria Bayless will lead us in discussion, Jeff Jones will lead us in discussion regarding a text amendment regarding crematoriums.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. This is old business. We have held the public hearing back in May, and board reviewed this text amendment in, at their June meeting and at the June 11th meeting two weeks ago. You all considered this zoning text amendment to remove crematoriums from O and I and C2 and to only allow for funeral homes in those two districts. At the meeting on the 11th, there was a table, a motion made and approved to give the board some time to maybe consider other, other ideas or do some research, and you all have had that time or asked questions, both those that may be here or staff, but staff has proposed, is recommending approval of the zoning text amendment to move crematoriums from, from C2 and O and I. I'll have crematoriums in M1 and M2.
All right, so we had others. Hearing on this matter at the.
May 29th.
May 29th, and then we looked at it and tabled it at the June 11th.
That's correct.
And so now we're talking about crematoriums only in M1 and M2.
That's correct.
Does the board have any questions? There is a handout at your desk regarding the technologies involved in cremation. Somehow or another, I think, some of us got on this board several years ago, and everyone thought we were investigating such things.
Actually, I had a little chat with Patrick Gretschel today, and he is the gentleman that sent me that paperwork, and I, Pat, have you, Alice printed out for you guys? The only concern I had regarding this was the, the two funeral homes that we have in town and the more. and the more that this service is coming up to the public due to funeral expenses and all. This is definitely a rising business, unfortunately, but more people are going to cremation than burial funerals. And I know we do have two funeral homes here in town. And I would hate to see this being pushed out and pushed either one of these funeral homes out of business. That's all I got to say about that.
I understand.
Because if you do read over that, it is, you can always find something negative about anything, but if you read all the mercury levels and all like this, it's in this handout. It was really astonishing to me when I read it and that, you know, it just, Dennis, right now that they're not, the mercury that they're not using in feelings since 1990. You know, of course, it's very minimal. Plus they're using different products and new technology all the time. I just want everybody to be aware, you know, that possibly we could be putting two funeral homes out of business down the road. I don't know. Hopefully not.
Thank you, Grandfather.
That's correct.
Well, some likely, I know that Jeff, right now you have approved the site plan for the Donaldson Funeral.
Right, so the zoning compliance for the Donaldson Funeral Home was approved by staff and that they have the right to keep moving forward even if the board were to act on this amendment tonight. And they would be grandfathered in, there would be a non-tenant use. The other one in C4, not funeral home, has been, they came through for an amendment last year or the year before, in the past. They specifically only wanted funeral homes. And in C4, which is their zone, that's really what staff was encouraging, you ought to approve, ultimately that's what you approved, was only a funeral home in C4. We had discussions with the funeral home director and owner, and they really have no desire to have a crematorium there. If that were to change for them, they could come back and request the board to reconsider that crematoriums in C4. But right now, there's no desire to have it, so I don't think we have to do anything differently than what's proposed before.
Talking for a deep thinking.
Thank you for that clarification. I was not aware of that completely. Pat.
Are there further questions or is there a motion?
Yeah, this is, this is interesting information. I would point out that this is sales literature. The only cited authority is themselves. In the, in the attached document, CANA Perspective on Mercury, I noticed that they talk a lot about units of mercury, but only in relation to the number of units put through the crematorium. They don't talk about any metric coming out of the air emissions. And the science is really important. You know, I took some time at the last meeting to mention this, and I think I need to mention it again, that I've been privileged to learn quite a lot about pollution from burning stuff. And when we try to burn things that are wet, that have moisture in them, I'm going to be a little bit more explicit than I was last week because I think this is really important. We create chemicals that are called dioxins and curans at much higher proportions than if the object being burned is dry. There are also polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, which are toxic and carcinogenic. Dioxins and curans are also toxic and carcinogenic. And it's pretty clear that they're not discussing those on this sales literature. They also don't discuss the mercury on this sales literature. So I think that this zoning amendment is important. I think it's important for protecting human health. I'm concerned that this got away from us, and I do have questions about the process and timing of your receipt of the application, Jeff. I don't want to go into that right now. We've got this matter in front of us. I strongly support the text amendment that would limit crematoriums to our outlying areas, as I believe this zoning amendment that you prepared does do, Mr. Jones. I strongly believe that this would be in the interest of health and welfare for our town and residents and people and creatures and breeds in town. So I strongly support it, and I encourage the entire board to support it.
Is there a motion, Mr. Bennett?
I move that we approve the amendment.
Motion by John Bennett, seconded by Bette Wilson Foley. Those in favor, please indicate. Yes, with respect to the consistency.
Yes, I move that we define this consistent with our land use plan.
And Bette Wilson Foley, are you in agreement with the, with your second still? This is the voting on the consistency statement, and those in favor, please indicate.
Yes, yes, okay. And I, let me say this, I do agree with putting it on the out there, but just as I said last time about the zoning, the M1 and M2 is close to Horton Middle School, so we need to take that into consideration and look at that zoning and pass rezoning. And then also around Parston, that's M1 and M2 as well. So a crematorium wouldn't be allowed in those places. So we just need to look at that zoning and consider rezoning those areas. So it wouldn't be allowed close to Horton and in danger of individuals there and behind Parston.
Is that a board directive to town initiate zoning, rezoning for 300 acres?
I'd definitely favor looking at Horton Middle School to make sure that things that's surrounding the porch saving to children.
You know, I understand the desire, and I don't think there are good reasons to do so, but at the end of the day, we still have to have some industrial uses in this town. We're going to need to have that tax base. EDC's been telling us this for years. I think any community will have industrial uses within its boundary and permitted uses within its zoning ordinance. So I think we should definitely take a comprehensive look at this idea.
Yeah, so I think what we could do is through the amendment tonight, reassess additional conditions to locating things that could be detrimental to people who live close by. A distance away or additional buffering or such, that's part of the discussion that we should have that would hopefully mitigate some of the issue. But I will do whatever, whatever goes.
Would we like to amend our motion then, to state that the amendment is being approved with the proviso that planning staff is directed to reexamine the areas of M1 and M2 that are providing other schools, churches, or daycare centers or residential area.
I don't think you can do that, Mayor. You've got to either up or down.
Yeah, on this particular matter, but Commissioner Walden, I've pledged to you, marketing and interest in exploring out of here. And I think if we're going to even follow this particular motion with a motion, perhaps similar to what Mayor has expressed, and that's still a question.
All right. Then we have the motion by John Bennett, seconded by Bette Wilson Foley for the consistency statement. And I don't believe we've taken the vote. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Then we need a motion to approve the actual text amendment.
Motion to approve the text amendment.
Second.
Moved again by John Bennett, seconded by Bette Wilson Foley. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion with respect to, or a directive to the planning department to investigate the M1 and M2? With perhaps some ideas about what other areas might be endangered? What other kinds of things besides schools and churches and daycares and that kind of thing?
Well, heavy industrial is needed for economy, and it is also an understandable concern in close proximity to some other uses like residential and schools. And so I don't know how it should be expressed, but I certainly would support a motion that staff come back in fairly short order, with presentation on various options.
I mean, I think I am concerned about such a blog list. If we did that true for all residents, since I would leave out the very little evidence that you raised at this point. So maybe, I certainly feel concerned about the pool. As far as the rest of the list, too, I'm not sure if we can include all of it, if we include every type that other residents, everything else.
Or at least incorporate what I heard from our planner, Jeff Jones, that if we might consider step backs, we might consider buffers.
Let us do a little research into other places and how they handle things like this and other maybe more nuisance types of uses that are allowed in M2 and M1, and if there's some ways to add some conditions. They keep them permitted, but most likely discussion on the utilities of they's permitted with some conditions fixed behind fence or it's going to be 1,000 feet from residential property or schools. There's things that we can kind of layer in there to boost protections. But let's do some research and we'll report back in July.
I think like air quality, though, it's really hard to better.
It's going to be tough. Maybe there's some, maybe there's some technology that we would want to have used to mitigate that.
Some cases, it is, or just maybe especially for some industry.
Yeah, yeah, those are all, could be on the table. Let's do a little research and come back and see if we can tackle this together. Maybe that could be our pre-meeting in July. We'll talk about it.
And I think you raise a really great point. There would be nothing we could do if this industry came, gets toxic for children, that's cool. I think that's, I'm so glad you brought that to your attention, the board. I think that's really important.
And I, you know, I do understand the industry, that's true, but you do have to, thank you.
Jeff, I wonder what the UDO has to offer in this regard? Not a whole lot. I think it really to those uses that we're currently in our top of the board, and apply them to that. There's no caveats of additional additions for uses of this ilk. So I think that's going to be nuanced to the UDO that we're going to develop over time.
I wonder, though, if they have any of these mitigating factors, such as bill steps passing landscape buffers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
With all red in the UDO.
Oh, I don't know, maybe. We can certainly talk to Roger and see if he has any ideas, if he has anything in the UDO, but I'm thinking there's not. But we can certainly develop while we can. Yeah, okay. You're right.
Next on the agenda, we have the update on Mosaic development, and we're looking to hear from Kirk Bradley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Commissioners, staff. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. We've been before you, had the pleasure of being before you on many occasions, but we hope, after working on this for about two years and things submitting about a year ago, we've worked through a lot of detail, and we hope to be in front of you formally. And we thought it was important that we maybe, we did this for the planning board, it would be useful for you guys to kind of see how everything, all the pieces and parts are coming together before we get into sort of the technical approvals. So this is just an information session, and happy to answer any questions, and we'll be as brief as we can, so. At the end, I'm going to need a, do you advance it with this or this?
Yeah.
And I'm going to need someone to use the mouse, because I can't do that for that last piece, last slide. Okay. So my name's Kirk Bradley, I'm with the Echo Group. My office is at 603 Garfield Street in Sanford, North Carolina. My partner, John Figo, is here tonight, and the two of us together formed the Echo Group back in 2009. And in addition to our own capital, we have local investors that invest with us in our projects. We were excited about Chatham Park, which I'll know a lot about, and we'll spend a little bit more time, but the, I could tell you that we wouldn't be doing this project even abstractly were it not for what Chatham Park is planning to do and the residential growth that's going to occur. There's just not enough. There's some demand, but we need the additional demand to do the type of project that we think will be unique and bring additional people to see both the existing and what the future of Chatham, or what Pittsburgh will be. Most importantly, we've tried to scale this project so it's consistent with the eight pillars, or seven pillars, excuse me, of Chatham Park, which are live, work, play, connect, diversity, green, stewardship, all-in-one, wholly sustainable, and collective identity. So we worked hard to do a mixed-use project, and we'll meet all these various directives in one 44-acre project. Almost two years ago, in September of 2016, we engaged a national firm of Robert J. Gibbs, Gibbs Planning Group, to come down here. And Mr. Gibbs has done work for a lot of large retail projects across the country, and we asked him to come and take a look at this site. And what he toured all around the triangle so that he could look at what the competition and other people were doing, and came back to us and showed us a fairly significant primary trade area there in the blue. But more importantly, the green area is the extended trade area, and it's one of the reasons why this project will work on the front end of the residential development. Typically, you get these types of projects in the middle or the back end, not at the beginning, and there's important economic development benefits, which I'll talk about in, and you'll see some other graphical image I'll show you now of how it takes this market area that he distributed, or showed, illustrated with these circles, you can kind of see. So there's a lot of retail to the east and north of us. Those are all outside the city limits and the county lines, very important. So all of our residents, when we had our charrette back in September 2016, which a lot of you participate in, you'll remember that that was a constant refrain of the need to drive out of county for a lot of goods and services. So we hope to bring those to you, both in this project and also the Northwood MUPD project. This is another similar image to show the various retail centers and malls around. First one's a grocery, but similar kind of illustration that there's a large hole in the donut, and we want to try and help fill in that hole. So we were tasked with the Chatham Park team, of working with them on a 226-acre mixed-use development. They had started some of that with their projects with the UNC Clinic, UNC Hospice, now the Root Cellar, other various uses. And we were specifically tasked with looking at the Mosaic A is what we're calling it, which is the 44-acre Lifestyle Entertainment Center. And then we also rezoned a track recently, which is 92 acres, Northwood MUPD, and we plan to make that more of our large tenant and grocery store center. This is the area we're talking about here. So the project I'm specifically addressing now is the Mosaic A, but you can see the area there at 226 acres north of 64 along 1551 Carter. I'd also like to remind everybody that this 44 acres was owned in 2006 for about 400,500 square feet of retail, is single fam, or... It's single fam, or single story, very traditional. Obviously, it didn't get built, but it is an important reminder that this has been zoned for commercial use before. I also like to point out, and one of the follow-up presentation my colleague, Mark Ashens, will do is about a very important technical thing for you to consider because this is your traditional sort of retail development where everything inside the sort of property line is private. And so you have a lot of driveway aisles. This is a form that everybody's seen or driven through in the region and across the country. Another important precedent to show is that previously this was a residential complex and we're, and so that was, so we've had residential there and retail there. We want to do something different. And so we've, we were tasked with that from the Chatham Park team. And so this is a bird's eye view of what our project looks like. And when you look at this, you say, gosh, those look like streets. This is great. We're going to have street fronts. But what they really are are private driveway aisles. And Mark's going to speak to that more important, but that's an important concept to look at because once, instead of arranging the parking in a big field and having drive aisles through there and putting retail or residential or whatever on the perimeter, we've tried to make it feel more like a urban core. So that's the top-down view. You'll see at the bottom Bojangles and Root Cellar. This is a more angular view. And the important thing here is we're going to come in and create a multi-story mixed-use community with retail, office, and residential all mixed together with buildings scaled from one story up to five stories. It's important to point out a few tenants. We are working, craft beer is a big important thing and we're going to make that a centerpiece, bringing in hopefully a tasting room for several North Carolina craft brewers. We'll also have a hotel, while we're here with you before, so we're excited to get a hotel in Pittsburgh. We have about 360 residential units. They'll be split between 155-unit, 55-plus artist colony, as well as 176 market rent apartments and 35 condos. So we'll have residential in our community so you can actually live. In addition, we're bringing in a live, 350-seat live performance theater, 100-seat black box theater, and an eight-screen first-run movie theater. These will all be first for Pittsburgh and very important. We'll also have a faith community there that will be in-line, just like any other of our services. We are also working to have a Class A office space, which will be both for, you know, if you have a 4,000 or 5,000 square foot need, but we also want to create a lot of co-working space. We think that's an important use for Chatham County here. And so we're working to develop that, so about 100,000 square feet. So you can work here as well, so you can live and work here. But most important, you can play here. We'll have shops, we'll have coffee shop, we'll have restaurants, we'll have a fitness center, lots of services, medical services that people will need, all within this 750,000 square foot project. We feel like the project itself will be in a minute. We'll have walking trails on the perimeter. All of this will be graded such that it's ADA accessible, so very walkable. Feel like a nice city street as you're walking through it. But we also have some specific amenities we'd like to point out. Public art will be located throughout the project and the buildings themselves we feel like will be art. We have an outdoor live performance stage, which will allow for movie showings and other performances, plays and/or movies. We have the workshop, which will be open for farmer's market and other event space. We have sort of two event spaces. We have a large lawn and a workshop. We'll also be providing within these play areas and family gathering spaces for before and after you come and dine or go see the movie or a show. In addition, we have multimodal access. We've focused on that with pedestrian. So we have that building scale and the sidewalk scale to allow cafes on the sidewalks, but also people to walk by bicycle lanes, access points and parking areas and some areas for delivery drones because we feel like a lot of our residents will want that as well. Trying to future-proof this as much as possible. But before I show you the next slide, I'd just like to share with you that I've done this presentation and many of you have seen parts of it in other places, but we've done it recently for several economic developers, developers of the Research Triangle Regional Partnership, the EDPNC. And when I, I participate in some of my other development activities on projects that we get from businesses that are looking to relocate to North Carolina and they give you these requests for information and they say, okay, we're going to come in, invest this much, put this many jobs, and things of that nature. And when I said to them, if I came to you and what would you do if I said we were going to create 1,000 jobs, add 185 million to the tax base, and create a million in revenue for the town, you know, would that be an exciting project for you? And they all, you know, say absolutely. And so that's really what Mosaic's going to be about. That's an important thing. I know you spent a lot of time talking about Chatham Park and you've had to deal with, you know, positive and negative impact packs and what you created with the additional elements will create a project that I think you'll be very proud of. But the results of doing all that work, it allows you to get some things that are going to come and create a very important economic impact for your city. I mentioned 1,000 jobs and 186 million in tax base, million in annual revenue. And I think that's important to put in perspective. As I understand it, your tax base is about 500 million. I think, I think that says general revenue should be general revenue funds about 4.5 million. Is that right? And so if you look at that, that's a 35% increase in your current tax base and a 20% increase in your revenues just in this one project. And that'll occur over three or four years. It's not going to be a flip a switch, but we are getting it teed up and ready to get started on that. And that's an important element that I think everybody should be aware of. And that's all happening because of the bigger picture here at Chatham Park. So let me ask you, Brian, if you could run that video and everybody can kind of see. This is a fly-through that'll give you sort of how all those elements come together in this project.
That's the, this is the PDF version, so the video probably isn't.
It's not in there? I'll read the changes.
Is there any website content?
It is. There's our point, it should be in there.
While we're waiting, Mr. Bradley, thank you for the presentation. It's really, it is very exciting. And I'd like to ask if you could reiterate the timing to build out. You're saying three or four years?
Probably closer to three. It just depends on.
Four hotels?
Yeah. So that's pretty fast. So we plan to, we hope, depending on when we can start, we hope to start by September, October with grading. That'll take about a year. Buildings will take anywhere from six to 12 months. The hotel will be one of the first projects that starts. That's a longer lead time because it's a large building. So we expect to start delivering buildings in the first quarter of 2020 and then follow through with that. So we hope to have all the buildings up by 2022 or 2023. Is it hung up, Brian? Is it gone?
You still try to lay it.
Any other questions while we're waiting? I'm happy to answer today.
There is, I can see why it would take a year to grade it, in so much as there's really a very nice hillside there. And is the grading material just going to flatten it out or is there going to be some degree of change in elevation throughout the project?
Well, we are going to bring it to a point where it will be relatively flat because if you want it, the sidewalks to be wheelchair accessible, it has to have a very consistent grade. But there will be a couple of places where it steps down in transition behind the buildings. So you can see these two roads where they intersect and the buildings are up there and then the parking areas will actually go down and be a little bit. So we're trying to take the grade up in easy ways for people to be able to navigate that so you're not killing it. But there will be retaining walls and we're sort of trying to bring it down and smooth it out. So we're balancing the dirt, so we aren't planning to either import or export any, so hopefully that'll work out.
Someone told me one time that some of the best soil in Chatham County was located on that hill. And that was one reason that the Mosaic Park was able to be there, that that soil is just absolutely incredible.
Because it's perched so well?
Yes.
Well, let's hope so. We think there's some, that's the good news if that's true, but unfortunately in the center point, we understand there's some rock and we're going to have to bring that down. So a little bit tricky, so it'll work. Is this it? Should be the last slide there. There we go.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. It's time to. This is the fitness center in the front. We have a convenience store. And then as you enter Mosaic Boulevard, that's a UNC urgent care on your left. And then you can see sidewalks that'll connect to your name's sidewalk project and then there also be greenway trails all the way around the perimeter. So you can go up here and get your morning walk in and then kind of have coffee or lunch. So this is the Mosaic Boulevard. And again, this is really a parking lot driveway, private driveway aisle, but we want it to look and feel like a street. On the right is our brewery building where we're going to create a 12-tabroom space for breweries, distilleries, and wineries from North Carolina. On the left is the 155-unit Paradi O Artist Colony. Brings you right into our main activity and entertainment space. These are four-story buildings, retail on the first, office on the second, and then two stories of residential. Those are probably going to be condos versus for rent apartments. See our event commons there. The outdoor theater. It will have movies, theater performances, and music as well. Gives us the opportunity to play off the live performance theater as well as the cinema on the right. I think the important thing to see this sort of scale of these buildings so it's really, I think we'll have a good feel both walking and living there or working there, as the case may be. This is a place where we're taking up a little bit of that gray there. You can see it's slowed down. This goes to our other main sort of activity and entertainment area, what we're calling the workshop, that we hope to encourage other local events for arts or agriculture. Also, it's important that we put the parking on the outside and allow pedestrian activity and cross, sort of cross-pollination between buildings across the street. So that's very important. These are two-story buildings, retail, mostly restaurants on these first two floors, first floor, and then office on the second. Go back out and see the, this is Freedom Parkway, which will go down to the existing traffic circle near Root Cellar. The hotel we're driving by now. And this is a 175-unit apartment complex. This will be for rent apartments. So we'll have parking externally and underneath. So water quality pond will make into amenity as well, amenities for the apartments. Back over the hotel.
How many stores in the building?
Five. 120 keys. That's a local pharmacy building there, medical services. And back out to the intersection of Russell Run and 15501. I'd like to turn it over. Can you show the other room too, Brian? And this is an important technical concept and I'll have to speak to that on the private driveways.
Thank you, Kirk. Good evening, board members and staff. Mark Ashens from the C group. We've had the pleasure to be working with the ECO team on the project for the past two years and we're excited that we'll be in front of you in the near future and the planning board to discuss the first step, which is really just the master subdivision preliminary plat. And then after that, we'll be doing some infrastructure improvements after we get the appropriate permits. And then we'll be back in front of you with specific uses like hotel. So it's really, it's a multi-staged effort. So when we do get in front of you for the first time, it's really going to be setting up the major infrastructure. And as Kirk mentioned, one of the important aspects is the private road. So this is a reported cloud. Some of you have been to North Hills and North Rollin', and obviously their buildings are more vertical, but it's the same concept. What you have is you have private drives that have public utilities, eneasements, and have public vehicular pedestrian access. So that's sort of the approach that we're going to be using here on this project as well. You have this already in Pittsburgh, but it's really more of a utilitarian sort of case. The drive aisle that's in front of the Lowe's parking lot that serves the Waffle House and the Taco Bell, that's a private drive. That's not a town street. Public access back and forth. There really are sidewalks there, but it's that same concept. What we're doing here, similar to the original shopping center that was approved on the property, is everything sort of internal will be private, privately maintained and be maintained by an association made up of all of the uses on the site. And so that's, that's different from what you saw when we came in front of you with the Northwood MUPD where we had public streets and sort of a traditional sort of sidewalk layout. This will be much more variable once you get on the property. And that's one of the important things I wanted to go with you tonight is, is that in the Chatham Park elements, there are things that say basically, street trees need to be on an average of 50-foot spacing. And so we will have that in the property, but you're going to see various treatments within the site that deal with how pedestrians are moving through the property and sort of the width. And along with the street parking, both parallel parking, dive-in parking, and angle parking will be utilized on these private drives. And you can see in this example, this one is very urban feeling right here. There's some small planter boxes. Here's another example where tree grates are utilized instead of a planting island. So in these particular locations, we'll have a structured cell area, a tree cell area below the pavers to allow adequate growth for these street trees to survive. So that you'll still have the proper treatment for the tree, it's just there's not a 300-square-foot vegetated area around it. And that's very important because we're trying to maximize the seating and pedestrian activity in those areas. In other areas, we still will have that too. In some instances, we'll have raised planters so that you may have split access between one side of the planter and another side. And so we'll be getting into more detail about this when we're finally in front of you, but I just wanted to sort of bring up this issue because it's somewhat different from what you brought to our previous projects here in the town. And here's more of a traditional planter. Even this would need some type of tree cell underneath it, but you can see there's a little bit of vegetation, you know, around that. And you can see there's basically a tree and then there's a light pole and then another tree and that spacing's about 50 feet and we're sort of on opposite 50-foot increments, you know, along the street. What I can tell you is in all of the main areas within the property where we're facing retail on these major drives, we're going to have at least 15 feet from the back of the curb to the face of the building. In some instances, it'll be as much as 30, 35 feet or even greater. In front of the brewery, it's going to be closer to 50 feet. But there'll be a high degree of variability in the type of paver, how the street trees are presented, and actually the walk, walking area. And that pretty much covers it. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Is there more questions for under Mark Ashens or Kirk Bradley?
Mark, you gave one phrase that I'm not familiar with. Did you say dive in parking?
90-degree parking, basically. It sounds better. And to answer one question briefly about the grade, as you mentioned, Mayor Perry, that's, there's a tremendous hill up there. We're not looking to level the hill completely. That, that high point will still be the high point. That high point will still be the high point of the project, and that's where Mosaic Drive, which will come off of 15501, which aligns with the Northwood High School Drive, and Freedom Parkway will meet. So that will be sort of the pinnacle of the property. It will probably be about 10 feet lower than it is today, and then things will roll off from that point. The grade change from there to 15501 is actually fairly reasonable. The grade change to Russet Run, not so much. So we're going to be moving down that Freedom Parkway at just under 5%. And then once we pass the hotel, there's going to be a fairly sharp grade, but you can see it's out there today coming off the Russet Run circle. So we'll actually have a transition end that will be closer to, say, 12% right off of Russet Run. But before you get to the drive entry to the hotel, we'll be back into what I call a pedestrian-friendly scenario. And then our goal is really internal, is to make it, so if you come in and park, or if you came in via bike or walking from 15501, it would be all very friendly. But that Russet Run connection is just, it's like being west of here, there's just a steep transition.
If I'm hearing you correctly, then that would mean that's a south-facing slope?
Yes.
Is that incline?
Yes, it is.
This is, again, very exciting. This is a level of density that I think we really want to see, and allows for the kind of dynamic street scape activities and lifestyle that's very appealing, very attractive, very interesting. I'd like to step back for just a moment for one quick question. And it may be premature, but going back to the 15501 frontage, there's some just remarkable specimen trees out there on that frontage.
We've worked very hard on that, and we'll have a very detailed presentation of Chuck Smith and, as you know, there's sort of two layers of approval. We take it as and get it both sort of conceptually agreed to, but then technically agreed to by Chatham Park and then bring it to the town. But we've worked with an arborist out there, and I think we can give you some very good examples of, every effort's been made to say what we can say. I'd just like--
Kirk Raddick, may I ask you where the hotel incentives are with respect to, I'm understanding with the county changed their offering to you, and we have not taken you up again on our agenda, but wondered where that was with respect to.
I'm not aware that the county has changed the offering, so that's news to me. I'll verify that with Kyle. But we, Brian and I talked a little bit, and it's been kind of sitting out there. We've made some of the adjustments that were requested, and I just don't think it's, it's been, there's plenty of other agenda items that need to be taken up, but I think we're ready to come back, I believe. So we're ready whenever y'all are. That'd be great. And I'd just like to disclose, thank you for your time, and we're-- I'm sorry.
Just two questions. One, it says multimodal, and does that also include transit?
Yes. So we've got a transit stop behind the theater. So that's kind of a loop road, double T in, where we'll have a, either the Pittsburgh or Chapel Hill shuttle, or as other transit opportunities, go triangle, everything get developed, and that would be our designated transit stop.
What does delivery and ground access look like?
That's a good question. That's a, we're working on that to see what they need and what the clearances are, so-- Yeah, a very small helicopter. It might be adjacent to the transit stop, so we'll see. We're still working on exactly what the, you know, that's, nobody's doing that yet in this kind of setting, and so this area, they're doing it more in the urban areas they're testing in, so we just want to make sure, if possible, we can plan for that. But we don't have a specific design yet.
We had a presentation full of meetings, and there was discussion of passenger runs as a mode of transit.
That'd be exciting. We'll have to make sure that'd be more, maybe we have those on top of one of our buildings, on the landing pads, like the, you talk about the Uber, that one, the rental stuff. But I'd just like to close, thank you for your time. We look forward to coming back in front of you in a few weeks formally.
I have a question.
Yes.
I know, these are, this list of tenants, I'm curious to know how many of these are confirmed, how much of their percentage are all these confirmed, or some--
These are all pretty much confirmed. We have, we are, you know, most people, my banker would say, when I have a signed lease, that's a really confirmation, and we have not gotten to that stage for a variety of reasons, but that's what we're going to be doing over the next 90 days. But we've been able to hold most of these people for the last year or so, and we've had this in other projects. If the person we're planning on is doing that use, maybe it's an Italian restaurant and they decide not to go, we've always been able to find a similar use with a different person.
So beyond the concept, it's actually international?
Yes, yes. Well, we're excited to come. We're honored to be a part of the bigger Chatham Park project. Appreciate their confidence in us, and we are excited to bring this to Pittsburgh and its citizens. We think it's going to be a great project for every time. Thank you.
Let me say one thing off the, not really a question, but I do anticipate it being live, work, and play.
Yes.
And it's there, and I'm really anxious to see, being filled out with the possibility of 1,000 new jobs, I think would be great. And it looks like a great project.
Well, we're excited.
From what you indicated here.
Well, that's what we're planning to report today, so we're very excited. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kirk Raddick. Next on the agenda is the system development team. Gary Harton from the Wooten Company will be leading a unit discussion.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Gary Harton, engineer with Wooten Company, also the vice president. I'm afraid my presentation tonight is not going to be as exciting as the power substations or crematoriums or simply the mosaic, but I will, what I intend to do is walk you through, give you an update on system development fees, particularly as they relate to water and sewer improvements for the town. And I'll talk a little bit about the background, get into the objectives of the system development fees, talk a little bit about the methodology. I'm not going to bore you with tons of numbers, but I will just give you a quick example of how we calculate this, and then also discuss some of the preliminary findings that we've come across. But first thing we want to talk about is, you know, what are system development fees? And I think this has been a hot topic, especially at the General Assembly and the League of Municipalities, if you've been paying attention for the last several years. But what they are is ARAF, it allows a local government to charge a developer for water and sewer connections to major arterial, meaning system-wide or large lines that serve new, serve new development. And generally, those fees are calculated in one of two ways, and they are consistent with an AWWA manual. And the legislation that was passed prescribed that particular methods be used, as I'll go into in just a moment, that's so that municipalities or local governments are using the same methodology between, for each of their, for each of their assessments. But really, you're talking about two types of fees. Those fees are two types of methods, I should say. Those fees that cover existing assets, and those fees that cover new assets. And again, these fees are only charged to existing water and sewer customers, excuse me, not charged to existing water and sewer customers, only new customers. So what are SDFs, our system developments, system development fees? They are no longer considered impact fees. In fact, that terminology should just disappear because it brings up an old, or a previous, bad, I guess, insinuation of previous fees that were assessed and determined ultimately by the Supreme Court, the Court of Appeals, to be illegal. So we don't want to confuse them with these types of fees. Impact fees, capacity fees, availability fees, tap fees, contractual fees, user charges. Some of those on the left-hand column are still used today, but they are not system development fees. What they must do is they must recover the cost of providing the same level of service to your new customers as you're currently providing your existing customers. Therefore, they must be direct and reasonable. They must be tied for a particular type of asset. They must be tied to a master plan, a capital improvements plan, a land use plan. You just can't make up an arbitrary number for an asset that doesn't exist or is not planned to exist just to charge a developer for that particular asset. And then again, they must be reviewed and period, reviewed periodically and adjusted. The league specifies when those updates should occur, but I believe right now it is every five years. They need, at least every five years, they need to be reviewed, and then the timeframe must be specified for which they can be assessed. So generally, the planning timeframe is about 10 to 20 years. Little bit of background, won't jump, excuse me, into it too much, but this all really started with a lawsuit with one of your neighbors in the town of Carthage for quality-built homes filed suit against the town of Carthage for fees. Impact fees being assessed, the Supreme Court ultimately determined that those fees were not legal. That went to the appeals court, and the appeals court actually, they did not overturn the Supreme Court decision and ruled that Carthage had to repay quality-built homes for the previous 10 years of impact fees assessed. So there were other municipalities and local governments in the same boat at that time. They all went to the league for assistance. So behind some, behind closed doors, I would say the NC Home Builders Association, the league, had some serious conversations. They found a couple champions in the General Assembly to take this matter up. And then about 2017, you may have heard of House Bill 436. It eventually became session law, 2017-138, but it prescribed the method, excuse me, the methodology that I'm going to talk about for how these fees are calculated. That last, that last bullet there, SDF conformance, if fees are to be charged by the local government, they must be in compliance with this methodology after July 1st, 2018. So previous fees that folks had, they either needed to be amended or reconfigured so they were consistent with this methodology. I mentioned that there were three types of methods to calculate the fees. This is the first one, the buy-in or the equity cost method. And really what this does is it provides new expansion capacity to customers, to new customers, as if that capacity was added at the time of connection. It's a pretty wordy explanation, but really what it does is it compensates your existing water and sewer customers for carrying those costs of excess capacity built in advance of the new development. Lot to digest there. But really, I've underlined some keywords over there on the left-hand side as far as an overview. These fees are calculated based on the replacement value of the asset. So if the asset has a 20-year lifespan and it was built 10 years ago, we look at the 10-year depreciation of that asset and calculate what the cost to replace it is, and the new customers only pay for the 10 years remaining on that existing asset. So in essence, each new customer buys each a portion of the remaining capacity left in that asset. Really, that's appropriate for slow-growing areas or utilities that have been oversized, and the cost burden again is shared by existing and new development. For Pittsburgh, you've had a number of projects that kind of fall in this category over the last several years. You've done some work. You had about eight projects, your wastewater treatment plant that continue to service existing development and new development, which fall under this type of method. You've got some debt service. You've got about five loans, either federal, state, or private institution loans that were done for system-wide improvements, which will also fall into this category. And you also have some proposed sewer system outfall rehab that's upcoming. WK Dixon is doing a sewer system inventory, asset inventory assessment grant. They've identified some rehabilitation that needs to occur to your sewer outfall or to your sewer outfalls, and that can also be included in this calculation because it covers, again, your existing customers and your new customers. So net total, you've got about $5.1 million in assets that is eligible, excuse me, eligible for this cost method. The second one is the incremental cost method. And really what we're doing here is distributing the cost for improvements to the new customers and the proportionate share for their use of the facilities. So these require a specific service area, a specific planning period, they prescribe growth rate, but these are projects that are in the future. They don't exist, they're future assets. Therefore, they're based on the estimated value of that asset. And then each customer, each new customer pays for a, that incremental cost for providing that additional level of capacity. So if you had a 2-MGD facility, 2-million-gallon-per-day facility, and you were going to 8-MGD or 8-million-gallon-per-day facility, the incremental cost would be that 6-million-gallons-per-day difference that your new customers would pay for. And this is really appropriate for fast-growing areas or undersized utilities, and the cost burden is really covered by your new development. So how does this affect Pittsburgh? You're looking at a water, a major water treatment plant expansion or buy-in to a regional-type approach, going from 2 million to approximately 8.5 million gallons per day. The wastewater pump station in Forsmane from Pittsburgh to Sanford for two, an additional 2-MGD. You've also got capacity within the Sanford wastewater treatment plant that you purchased is eligible for this increment. And then the conversion of your existing wastewater treatment plant to provide 1.1 million gallons, 1.1 million gallons of equalization value. So these assets are quite a bit more than your existing assets. We're talking about almost $65 million in new assets that would be covered, that could be covered under the incremental cost method. The last one is a combined cost method. As its name implies, really, this is where Pittsburgh falls in, you're combining those two methods to take care of existing assets and proposed assets. So we're taking that 5.1 million in existing assets, we're going to calculate a fee for that portion. You're taking the new 65 million in assets, and you're calculating a fee to cover those projected assets. So it's really a combination of the buy-in and the incremental cost over a 10-year planning period. Roughly, how do we calculate it? I won't get into the nitty-gritty, but really what we're doing is we're calculating a unit charge. A unit charge, let's say, dollars per gallon for providing this additional capacity. So we take the cost of that asset, we multiply it by what percent of it is eligible for this fee. So certain projects you may have done, not all of that project may be applicable for new development. Some of them may have been, depending on what type of project it is, applicable to other things. So it could be anywhere from 0 to 100%. We then multiply that by what percent of it is water or what percent of it is sewer, and then we divide it by the design capacity of that particular unit. So for instance, Olive Green Pond, that was an improvement at your wastewater treatment plant for nearly $50,000. The depreciation on that to date has been nearly $6,000, so you've got about a $43,000 asset. It is 100% eligible. It's 100% related to sewer, and it is at your treatment plant, which provides 750,000 gallons per day or 0.75-MG. So that comes up to six cents per gallon. So what we do is we take all these assets, we break them down, just like we did here, we add those up to then calculate a dollar per unit capacity. We add the buy-ins to the incrementals together for that combined cost, and then depending on the size of customer, whether they're residential, institutional, commercial, industrial customer, you can then apply a multiplication factor to that to charge them a higher fee or a higher system development fee, if you so choose. So here's some calculations that we've done, just to give you some preliminary findings. On the left-hand side of this page are the buy-in costs. Those are the calculated costs using the buy-in methodology. So for water, we're looking at about $1.01 per gallon of capacity. For sewer, about $2.49 per gallon of capacity. On the right-hand side are the incremental costs. Water supplies, I mentioned, that's a large investment. You're looking at about $6, a little over $6 per gallon investment. And then sewer in the bottom right-hand corner. Again, that covers capacity purchase at Sanford in addition to the pump station enforcement facilities to go there, so-- facilities to go there, so that adds up to $14.23. What this page is showing you is how that works out by gallon, as I've noted at the top. I mentioned that, I mentioned the dollar one. If you look in the top row of the top table, I mentioned the dollar one for the water and the $2.49 for the sewer for a total of $3.50, $3.50 per gallon, which would be a typical residential user with a 5/8 inch meter. Now, larger customers generally have higher demands, place higher demands on the water and sewer systems. So what I've done is, using the AWWA manual that I mentioned earlier, they prescribe equivalent ratios in there. That's really a factor that you apply for a larger customer to make it a number of residential units. So for instance, a customer, let's say, a commercial customer with a 1 and a 1 and 1/2 inch meter is equivalent to five normal residential connections using a 5/8 inch meter. So if I take that $1.01 in that first row and I multiply it by five, then I come up with 505. And that's the methodology through there. So you'll see, as the meters get larger, so do the system development fees. The incremental cost, that's done in a very similar fashion at the bottom. You'll see there that I've circled in red a credit of 25%. That methodology, that 25% is a requirement. It's specified by the General Assembly. And what that is, is that assumes that your new connections, your new connections to the water and sewer system will pay a minimum of 25% of the new assets through normal user charges. It can go upwards and down, but the 25% is the, is the floor.
The floor.
I'm sorry?
The floor.
It is the floor, correct. So what, the previous slide I showed you by gallon, this slide I'm showing you the same methodology except by customer. And so for a buy-in cost for a normal, a normal residential customer using 360 gallons per day, their total buy-in cost would be $1,261. If you add to that an incremental cost at the bottom, again, a 5/8 inch meter adds $5,470 to that. Now, I want to mention that these equivalent ratios are one of four methods that you can adjust your non-residential customers. You can also base, excuse me, also base it on fixture units, if you like. You could base that on the estimated usage of that new customer for your non-residential plans. You could also look at particular customer, customer attributes, which may change, certain things are doing internally, which may change, affect their water usage in our place as high as a demand. So this equivalent ratio, I should say, is conservative. It represents the maximum demand that, that particular customer may show on the system. That slide basis. Again, we mentioned taking our buy-in, adding our incremental. What does that mean? What that means at the top, I've shown that to you on a per-gallon basis. So your 5/8 inch customer would pay $18.70 per gallon. If they were doing that as a typical connection, let's say a 360 gallon per day per connection, a residential, a new residential connection would be $6,731, as shown, I don't know if I have. This is by gallon, and this is by, by based on estimated usage value. So an 8-inch meter would be equivalent of 80 residential units. So their system development fee would be a little over $500,000. Have I lost you yet? Are you close? So how, what does all this mean? How does this apply with our expected, with the expected development? And there's been a lot of talk about Chatham Park this evening. And what this is here is basically a customer growth projection over the next 10 years. So these are the number of residential connections and commercial connections, I should call them non-residential, connections that we could anticipate over the next 10 years. This particular growth projection is the one that's been used with the state in preparing the preliminary engineering reports for the Forsman and the pump station. So what we're looking at there is five-year 2027. Looking at about 8,700 residential connections, a little over 500 residential water connections, excuse me, a little over 500 non-residential water connections, and a little bit less for your sewer connections, which is shown on the bottom. So how does that translate into dollars? In this one, again, lots of members, don't want to lose you, but the water revenues are shown at the top. I'm going to focus on the four blue numbers. Over on the right, on the top-left corner, the 2.7 million is what you would expect using the buy-in methodology for your water customers. The 12 million is what you would expect using the incremental cost method for your water customers. Looking at the bottom, 5.75 million is what you would anticipate from sewer revenues using your buy-in methodology. 24.6 million is what you would anticipate from sewer revenues using your incremental cost method. I figured it might be a little easier to look at this in a pie chart method. So this is what your 10-year revenues look like based on millions of dollars, total dollars, total million dollars generated over the planning period. Water, nearly 15 million. Sewer, nearly 30 million. I will say that the water is noticeably leaner than the sewer, and one reason for that is the town is in the process, or is getting ready to start an asset inventory and assessment project for its water system. It just finished sewer system. During the next year, two years, it's going to enter this same technical study process for its water system. Because we don't know what those numbers are yet for rehabilitation, repair of the water lines, we cannot, excuse me, we cannot include those as part of this, as part of the fees because they're simply not documented yet. That's not saying the town can't come back in two years after those numbers are in and revisit this and adjust those accordingly, but right now, I've excluded them simply due to the fact that they're undocumented costs. So some conclusions, Chatham County, growth within it, your existing, as you know, your existing water, wastewater facilities will need to be upgraded and expanded to handle the anticipated corrode. Pittsburgh should look at a combined cost methodology because I think it represents both sides of the coin. You've got existing assets with capacity that can still serve. You've got significant new assets that you're going to undertake some serious debt service for here to, to take care of. Water and sewer system development fees are calculated based on documented, upcoming capital improvements costs. And then again, your water's going to generate nearly 15 million as they're presented here, and sewer about $30 million, excuse me, over 10 years. What are the next steps? There is a report that I will be preparing for the towns to use for the public comment period. I'm about 95% of the way through, but I might have provided you a copy tonight. It's my intent to have that report completed during the first week of July and get that to the towns, they can publish that to go ahead and begin your public comment period before these fees can be adopted into local ordinance. As I require a minimum 45-day public comment period, followed by a public hearing. If there is a significant public comment, the town may elect to address, or issue responses to comments made, and then the, the ability to adopt those fees at its convenience. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to, excuse me, answering any questions you might have.
Mr. Hartson, will your July report have the combined method on a similar table to this page?
And if there are other meters or other size, different numbers you'd like to see versus a 1-inch commercial, I could certainly show that information.
Other questions for Mr. Rutherford?
Yeah, Gary, I have one. And you may have went over it, I may have slid right over my head, it's only the first time. Is this just for new customers or all customers?
This fee would be assessed to new customers only, not existing customers.
And what about residential versus commercial? Is it existing, commercial, the same? I mean, is it still, I guess what I'm trying to say, is it not being charged, these are business that are already here under the town water system?
No existing customers, whether they're residential or non-residential, would be assessed these fees.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Gary, I think you had mentioned that you established a base fee, but said the town could charge greater than that value.
As far as your other customers, this, associated with this fee? The fee that you calculate, we'll just talk about the combined fee, which is a combination of the two. The town may charge up to that figure, up to that documented figure, but the town should not charge above that figure. They can certainly charge less.
Well, I misunderstood.
If they like, but not, but not above that figure.
I think you were referring to that 25% from the legislature.
The 20, yeah, 25% credit. That number can be higher.
You can provide greater credit.
You can provide greater credit, that's correct. Which would reduce your incremental costs and reduce your overall revenues from that, that particular cost method.
So I see you're basing most things on meter size, and I guess that's an indication of impact on the system?
Correct. That's one way of measuring it.
Is it a ratio associated with the volume that can pass through that meter?
Yes. That is the maximum safe operating value, volume that can pass through that meter. So that may not necessarily, that number, that equivalent ratio is conservative. Your customers may exhibit less than that equivalent ratio.
So presently, or formerly, the town's fees were based on gallons per day. Now we're talking about basing it on meter size.
Meter size is one way. You can also, the estimated usage or the number of fixture units, if a new developer comes in and says, here's our calculations, we anticipate to use this number of gallons residential, this number of gallons non-residential, you can also assess the fee based on that versus a meter size.
Wouldn't that be an indication of the size of meter you use?
It, well, it depends on what there's specifically, what that plan looks at, what the, what their, each type of development within that plan is specified as. So you could have multiple commercial businesses, each with different sized meters. Or you may elect to say, this business is anticipated to use 1,000 gallons per day and assess the fee based on 1,000 gallons per day versus, you know, a 2-inch meter.
At what point in the system would the fee be charged?
At what point in the system?
At what point in the development would a fee be charged to a customer or to a developer or to a user?
That is specified by the LEAK, and I will need to double-check that for you. It is well in advance of actual physical connection. It is specified by, by the, by the General Assembly. I just need to double-check that.
And this is a one-time charge?
Correct.
So change of use of the facility doesn't incur a charge?
I suppose it would depend if they're a new customer.
Well, let's say, this building, for instance, and let's say it has a 2-inch meter, changes use, you don't need to change the meter size.
But if it increased, that's a different story.
And how would one, how would it increase? By calculating the volume? Presumably, the meter can handle the volume.
Typically, the meter is sized for the volume, so if you change the meter, I think you would consider that difference in usage or meter size. But in essence, if we take a step back and think about what, what that, this system development fee accomplishes, this is to, essentially, this would be an existing, it's an existing customer of the town. So by changing the occupancy of the building, let's say it's roughly, you know, identical usage, you're not really placing any new demands on the system. It requires an upgrade to the capacity and expansion of those particular facilities. But that's another great question I'm looking to for you.
And when, I think you, you were describing drinking water side of these numbers and rehabilitation report.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a due date on that or am I expecting that back?
We're just starting to work on it right now. He said, he said two years, the last one took approximately two years. I would hope this one would be a little bit quicker, but I don't want to oversell it.
So does that translate then to, if in fact, we adopt a fee structure, that it will have to exclude the water component of the fee?
No, not the, not the water system costs that are currently documented, but if that report comes out and says you need to do $10 million worth of rehabilitation to your main arteries or transmission lines through town, at that point, when you can reference it, you can then include it as part of the, as part of the fee. And you go back through the.
From that home and port.
Further questions for Gary Hartson?
Thank you. Appreciate you.
The next item is the National Development Coordinance update with Jeff Jones, and we need to set a public hearing for our next meeting in July.
Yeah, I wanted to give you an update on the UDO. Since our May workshop, we have held a, two informational sessions, and those are photos that you see on the screen. One here in this office or in this room on May 16th, and then staff was out at our June or Sunday. And we roughly had 30, 25, 30 folks who would stop by our booth or who attended our informational session here at the, at Town Hall. I think there were, we had some good questions, some good feedback. We had sort of a potterstone camp that wanted to know about things that were happening for them and then how the UDO might help them in future projects that could, could impact them. And then we just had some, some general questions from developers in town and others. But as staff and our consultant Roger pointed out back in April when we did an update, the next progression in the UDO is to schedule a public hearing and to, to hold that public hearing to sort of move the, the UDO process along. Doesn't mean once we have a public hearing that things might not change or comments have to cease. It's just part of the process of hearing from the public, you know, efficient capacity that we, that we would, we would do that next. I anticipated that you all might want to have additional time with UDO or additional time with Roger and staff to have a workshop. It might be in our interest to hold the public hearing, to hear from the public, and then It might be in our interest to hold the public hearing, to hear from the public, and then hold a workshop sometime after the July 23rd meeting. So that's out there, we can always do that. Once we're comfortable moving this forward, the progression would be public hearing, then planning for a recommendation, and then back to you all for adoption, and then an effective date, most likely three to four months out would be the adoption date. So as, as we are, we're in June, July will be our, our public hearing, you know, you can see if we, if we sort of progressed every month, we would still be sometime in the fall, maybe even early winter before we're actually utilizing the UDO, just by having some time that we have. But that's sort of where staff is at, and I think a question for you all to discuss, potentially doing a public hearing in July.
How's Ford Field? Is the June date commenable to the folks for that public hearing in July?
July.
Excuse me.
Almost 13.
How's the next one?
Yeah, I think we could hold the public hearing, we could decide then whether to hold it open if it went on for a very long time, I think we could decide whether to have the work sessions.
Sounds appealing to me. Honestly, I've kind of been frustrated with the work sessions we've had with Roger, I don't see him providing a lot of guidance, a lot of input, and it seems taking notes, which is, you know, I, I've downloaded everything from the web, so, you know, we've got the comments that were received, and we've got the answers, and there are answers that are like, yeah, we should consider that.
Right.
Well, yeah, that's what we're talking about. Let's consider it. What are, you know, how is it in the UDO? How are we addressing this? So those are questions posed to him a long, long time ago. So, yeah, I think more active role on his part would be very helpful, because I had other community, a lot of questions, and, you know, Brian was mentioning the other day, at one of our work sessions, that the way it's written now, it would not offer Sunday, and it wouldn't allow farmer's market.
Right.
And I said, well, what about our community that you really understand? So, you know, giving a hard time right now, but feeling that way. So, we certainly would want to adopt any ordinance as flawed as it is to exclude either of those two issues from our town, so we would have to clean that up before adoption. But there's going to be things that we might not hit the mark on at first adoption, and we're going to have a list, and you all will see things that'll come through that, that's not really what we thought we wanted. And we'll just keep moving forward. I spoke to the Town Apex, they, they had the same consultant, and they're, they're about 25 supplement in, with the same, same issues, so you just have to know it's living document, and you work within that, and you change whenever you see fit.
Well, I think we're getting some practice with our whole document right now.
We kind of are, aren't we?
Yeah, we are.
We're going through that, so at least we'll know the process.
So Jeff, I'm, it seems like we're going to have a list of asks that, issues, problems, necessary edits for the UDO, as Commissioner Fiocco just pointed out, a couple of them. I can imagine that that list is going to become sizable, and we've already, I've been very frustrated that our consultant has not been more responsive to those lists previously. Can I ask that you think about, if you have a means of prioritizing those?
Yeah.
I've not been asked for a quantitative metric or some kind of calculus.
Right.
But I remember when you were first with us, and you looked at the additional elements, and you gave them a color coding, I think.
Yes.
Just to try and get some sense of priority, or gut level. Maybe something as simple as that.
Yeah, we'll definitely do that, and I think the two uses for Sunday, farmer's market, those are high priority things that we want changed now. And there is a commitment from Claireanne and Roger to do those edits for us now.
Okay, good, good.
I think what, what it expands to is like new lighting ordinances, or utilizing dark sky, that's outside of our current contract, but I could detail out those things that I believe, I've heard from you all and the citizens, that we want to see after the UDO. I can also detail out things that I believe that Roger and I are on the same page now.
True.
Yeah, that we're going to do those edits prior to adoption. Yeah. Provide that at the public hearing.
Just want to make sure that our ordinance reflects the culture of this town, if we're not just one-size-fits-all ordinance that others don't agree with, that we can protect them and things are more, it's right.
Yeah, that is, and that's a, that's a goal that we'll try to strive for, working within the realms of zoning and what the legislature allows us to do, and treating everybody with the same respect in town. If it's, you know, if they're here, or they won't be here, and our ordinance is okay that, then we probably have to work with it now. But we can always amend, we, we're getting good at that, where we see fit.
There's so many things now about what people want, that the old one would apply to what's coming.
Yeah, and I think we're seeing that with our old zoning ordinance that is very dated in the UDO. Even that adoption is going to be better than what we're currently, I've been saying that for a long time. And I hope that that will be responsive to what this community wants, wanted to have when it started four years ago. And I believe it does hit that, it just doesn't go the next step. We'll get there.
We got a motion then to, it's probably carried from 23rd of July. So this, the group, I've got a little control, they can, but John Bonnet does favor, please indicate by the Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries unanimously. Are we next into the additional element for public facilities?
We are. So we're continuing our discussion on public facilities with Chatham Park, and I know that there have been a number of things that you all have discussed over the last few months of discussing public facility. You know, items from schools, to fire stations, police stations, to parks, and I believe that there's been some movement on a couple of items since our last meeting that Chatham Park wants to share with you all. I think the discussion on the parks component is still outstanding a little bit. Paul is here to answer any questions, Stan, I'm here to answer any questions for you. We're learning more about how Chatham Park may be of the funds and things, and I think the Special Assessment District and Parks and Greenways being able to potentially be funded, not bad. Funding mechanism may be a good thing for us. But I'll turn over to Chatham Park to kind of walk you through some of the things that have changed. They provided, not a full draft, a change, but I think in your package, you've got some targeted language for reclaimed water, maybe some language that has been discussed on fire services, so I'll, I'll have Chatham Park to answer any questions you may have.
May I have Commissioner's Kegel, 2235 Gateway Access Point, Raleigh? The three things that I would like to discuss with you, one of them's going to be a little different from what you have, but let's, you don't mind looking at the two that you, that haven't changed. First thing I have on top here is this sheet that says reservations at the top, and this is the language in, drafted in response to Commissioner Fiocco's concerns about having sufficient capacities for public facilities, for sewer, and for impervious surface, and for stormwater, and, and sites for schools, which is briefly mentioned there, all of it's elaborated on in the school section, which we've been through previously. The, the conclusion on our end, as we thought about this and looked at this, is that the better place to address these things is going to be in the small area plans, where we can zero in better on what development we expect to occur, and how to look at where sites should go in conjunction with talking with the schools, and with, with the fire department, and looking at, at other public facilities, and also in doing that, anticipating what those public facilities might be, how much impervious surface might be needed, how much sewer might be needed, and how to address stormwater based on what's anticipated in those public facilities. So this language just reflects that. And that's, that's it in a nutshell, happy to discuss this with you, and get your feedback for us to, to consider. If you have any questions or comments.
Congratulations in the word for Ken.
My fellow feeling is that this accomplishes the goal of ensuring that we have adequate development capacity for the facilities, but, you know, one of the things that we've been trying to do is future-proof, right, the development. One of the things that comes to mind is, you know, through the course of this project, when the small area plans get combined, as many have been combined, you know, there'll be a fixed point in time when the analysis is performed, which says five-minute time of response for fire EMS. And what happens when the metrics change over time, 10 years from now, five minutes is inadequate, now two minutes. Do we revisit small area plans to address those types of concerns, and are there ways in which we can make into this element that flexibility? I don't know if it's a metric that says, you know, when standards change by more than 20% or 10% that we're revisiting, or maybe it's just a periodic revisiting. I, I don't know what the answer is, but I suspect that there's an issue here that wants to go both ways, honestly. It might be that two fire stations were identified, but the time of response for automobiles or vehicles is no longer, and upon, well, is no longer the critical factor, because now there's some new technology that gets there much quicker, such as drones.
I don't have an answer for that. I mean, it's, I, you don't know when a standard might change, or how it might change, I'm just not sure. We do the best we can at the time we're doing it, just like any kind of planning process. You know, if the, if the standard changed early on, it's a whole lot easier to deal with, obviously, than when you're 90% through with the development in a small area, and all of a sudden, the fire standard changes from five minutes to four minutes, there's probably not a whole lot you can do about that at that point, because fire station site's already pretty much fixed, based on the planning that was done initially, and then over the course of time, dealing with the fire department, just to use that as an example, I'm picking on them, but just to use fire department as an example. That's kind of the easiest standard to talk about, as far as what's something changing like that. Or, as you say, I mean, who knows, it could go the other way as well, right? But I, I don't know, I mean, it's certainly open to suggestion, but I, I'm just not sure how you deal with something that's as unknown as that, in the process of finding a plan for.
And not either. And I do think that, you know, this is trying to, to address, and I think successfully does address, the concept of adequacy and making sure that the project doesn't develop beyond a point at which you've got a school site designated here, but used up all the impervious surface.
Right, and that, yes, and this was the attempt to address that, I mean, if you, if you get down, and, and really, it's a situation where, to take the school site, it would be the last thing to be developed, is where the most critical point in time would be. But that's going to be true, even if the school site, or the fire site, or whatever is not the last thing, we may have a residential subdivision that's the last thing. And so we've got to be thinking ahead, and not, and not use up all the impervious surface, or use up all the sewer capacity. I mean, it's, it's incumbent on us, on Chatham Park, to, to try to be as careful with all of these things. I, I know from your perspective, board's perspective, it's, you know, the public facilities are the concern, but from our perspective, we, we have to be thinking about this for every development, so that we don't get, we don't get down to the last site, and, you know, we think it's going to be this, and all of a sudden, it's going to be 20 more acres of something else. I mean, it just, so I think, you know, with, with the time that Chuck, and Robbie Odom, and, and other people on our end spend looking and thinking about these things, and talking with potential developers, for example, working with a mosaic, or working with, with a home builder that might come in and build subdivision, I think a lot of these things are thought about and addressed, and we try to be, be careful with, so that we don't use up the resources, or allocate too many resources to one thing. So I know that's not a solution, that's not how you deal with change standards, but it's a, it's a continuing planning process in whatever area that we're dealing with, to try to ensure that, that, you know, we can do what we are setting out to do, and what we are anticipating in, in that small area.
One point, too, I think the language that, I think Mr. Farrell was concerned about earlier in the general provisions, talked about that we would both get together annually, or whatever that is, to look at these things, and just see how they are current, and if there's something about the fire that becomes inadequate because of changing standards, then that's the time that we would address that at some point.
That's a good point.
Mr. Director, the direction that the board wishes to give to the board?
I guess I need a little clarification on one thing. I talked to Ken Urfo over the weekend, and Chuck, appreciate the meeting, and both, I talked to Patrick Bradshaw today, and he has got a conflict of interest, where he's been our lawyer on the fire department for years, but he has been hired by Kirk Bradley in the Mosaic. He did not want to, he said it was a conflict of interest for him to represent us and the Mosaic, Kirk Bradley, and I'm sure their retention was a lot higher than ours. Mr. Messick here is supposed to be looking over this paperwork, and we had a few items we wanted, and some wording that we needed to change.
Well, we're not talking about the, the fire station site language, which is fine, and, and Mr. Farrell and I had a conversation about this Friday, and I made some revisions that you may or may not have before you right now, I'm not sure. I brought them with me to hand out, and this may address some of Commissioner Farrell's concerns, I'm not sure, but if I could take a minute and hand those out. We do that. This is a clean, revised draft in a red line. That's what you, that's why you got to do.
Ken, I have one. This was, Chief Griffin is on vacation this week, but he did, we did discuss this, and I think I said something to you. In the acreage, correct me if we're wrong, we had two and a half to three acres maximum. What was that?
That's what we talked about.
That's my fault then. That's, I thought, for some reason I had two, two and a half.
Well, I may have, I had two and a half and didn't add, but he did make a comment on that to me today.
Okay, well, I.
Two and a half.
Two and a half to three. And that was one of those, Commissioner Farrell, one of those things that you asked to be added in that, and I apologize if I got that wrong.
No, that's, actually, I talked to Robbie, too, and we just felt like down the road, down the road, probably need some type of amount.
Sure, well, I've noted, I've noted that. Just generally, if I could take just a minute, the concept is this, you know, Chatham Park is committing to donate to the fire department up to three sites in Chatham Park. And if, and if the fire department has the resources at the time that it becomes necessary to build the fire station, we certainly hope that those resources will be there from whatever source, Chatham County or Pittsboro combination, that the fire department can, feels like it can build the building, then, you know, we donate the land, fire department builds the building. If, for whatever reason, that's not viable at the time and the fire department comes to Chatham Park and says, eh, you know, our resources aren't quite there at the time, Chatham Park has offered to try to work something out with the fire department where Chatham Park would actually build the building and lease it to the fire station. And what, one point of the confusion was, I think, was Commissioner Farrell had said, well, are you, are you still donating the site if, you know, if you're going to, if Chatham Park ends up building the building? And I explained, well, yes, we are, but in order for Chatham Park to be a landlord in that situation, it would have to own the land. And so in that situation, Chatham Park would own the land, build the building, lease it to the fire department, when the cost of the building were paid, and we would just deed it to the fire department. So either way, the land site is a donation. It's not no charge for that, it's a gift to the fire department. But in order to do a lease, if it's a, Chatham Park builds the building, then Chatham Park would have to own it and lease it to the fire station, and once it's paid, then convey it to the fire station. So that was one point of clarification. And kind of a similar thing with the equipment. I think the discussion was if the fire department needs some help with, on the front end with the equipment, that Chatham Park could acquire equipment, truck, whatever it is, up to a total of $2.5 million and lease that to the fire department. And again, we have no interest in owning that long term, just get our costs paid and the equipment's all the fire department's. So I hope I've cleared that up, and I guess if I haven't, we'll work on the language some more. But that's kind of, that's the basic concept.
Leasing, sounds like financing.
Well, yeah, kind of is, in a sense. I mean, it's.
That would, I think, more thoroughly communicate the intent, because it doesn't say lease to whom. I said, I mean, when I read it, I was like, does the fire department really want to lease the equipment? Or I didn't think about leasing the building. But you're talking about financing, where you're providing it and this fire department's paying Chatham Park back for the equipment.
It sort of depends on the useful life of the equipment and the term of the lease. And so there are two variables there that could make a big difference, one way or the other. If the equipment's only got a 10-year life expectancy and you lease it for 10 years, what's the point of owning it? So it depends.
That was just put in there more or less as an option, because we don't lease anything now. That was more than 10 of that one, above.
At least, Chief, brought up, if we needed some equipment, how would we be able to afford it? We said, well, if we can help, we would advance the dollars and lease it to the fire department. And I doubt that that would ever be something to look to us to do, but we offered it as an option to try to say, well, look, hey, if you want a fire truck and you can't afford to buy a fire truck, and we can purchase one and lease it to you, we'd be, you know, competitive on whatever leasing rates, and then as far as what the credit may need to be from a leasing company, we would obviously be able to bypass that.
I don't have experience, but.
They've released the fire truck, so I don't know.
It's just an option to get, look. It was brought up.
Realizing that having a fire station with no equipment would not be a very good idea. We're talking about personnel. We do not offer to lease personnel to the fire department. That's the, I think that's the way that Commissioner Farrell and Mr. Rawl were thinking about it.
And I agree, I think that's an important option in reference to it, because right now, Chatham County, because I'd asked about enough fire stations, locations, and they indicated they could not afford to do one.
Well, of course, that's a matter of priorities, Commissioner. I can't speak for Chatham County.
I can't either, but.
But I do know the amount of tax money that Chatham Park is generating for Chatham County for basically no services, so, again, it's a matter of priority.
Well, that's about the biggest subsidy for equipment would be when we first build those five-story buildings, we're going to need.
I understand.
Yeah, and I'm not saying you have to say to everybody, because that would might be an example when the county might not be able to come up with the funds, and it might, it'd be nice to have that option if we needed to do something quickly like that. I imagine you guys might be faster than the county government.
There are no county public fire facilities in Chatham County. It's all private nonprofits. They're funded by taxpayers, but not the county. It's a completely separate entity.
And then possibly in 10 years down the road, Pittsboro may have their own fire department.
Exactly.
If they think Pittsboro Fire Department, period.
Yeah. Again, I know you're just seeing this revised, and it's, and certainly, you know, if you have some other responses or questions or comments about it.
Ken, can I just say, I feel pretty, I would just like Chief Griffin to look over this with Paul, and I think we.
And Paul and I can discuss it if something comes up, if we can get together and work on any revisions that, you know, might be necessary. So the last, the last item I had for my part of this was Mr. Jones had asked for us to put some additional language in the public facilities element about reclaimed water, and that's what this final sheet is.
Yeah, can you help me understand the second paragraph, purpose of that second?
I'll do my best. Yes, Ford, do you have a specific question or?
What's the purpose? Why is that?
Well, the purpose is just to point out that, obviously, to be able to use reclaimed water, you have to have reclaimed water. So if there's none available, you're not going to be able to be a reclaimed water customer. If it's available, then fine, but we don't know right now how much reclaimed water might be available. It all depends on what wastewater treatment solutions are done in the future. We know right now that there can be reclaimed water from the new wastewater treatment plant that's being constructed in Chatham Park. It's designed certainly for that purpose. Don't believe we'll be getting any reclaimed water, at least not to start with, from the Sanford facility. So all of it, once, excuse me, once the Sanford line is in operation, then all of the reclaimed water for a period of time will be coming out of the wastewater treatment plant in Chatham Park. And it's, once it reaches capacity, then as far as producing reclaimed water, then, you know, we won't have any until there's another plant that does produce it.
So just in terms of principles, it feels like this language subordinates reuse water, the importance of reuse water as resource.
That's certainly not the intent. We're not trying to subordinate it, we're just.
Well, it puts it only on one side of the road, and it's going to make it more expensive for folks on the other side of the road to tap into it, and it's making tap in voluntary. And I think for commercial, for non-residential facilities in the Mosaic, wasn't that required that reuse water be connected to non-residential facilities in Mosaic?
I will check that, I'm not sure it was a requirement, but I'll certainly, if it is, then we'll fix that.
Great. Yes.
I want to stick it up on the same theme, and in my experience, that purple pipe is being put into all the roadways and that all parcels are, is being stubbed, purple pipe's being stubbed to those parcels so that it really doesn't matter if you're on the far side of the road or not, because it's going to get run across. My practical experience with one project, that is the case and was the requirement. So that's my understanding, is a purple pipe being run everywhere and stubbed to all properties, residential or commercial.
Well, we will show that on the small area plan as to how it's going to be laid out. And I think it's going to depend, I mean, for example, you wouldn't, we wouldn't anticipate that we would necessarily stub out a reclaimed water, stub out to small resident, each small residential lot, if it's like a townhouse or something that may not have much of a yard to even need reclaimed water for irrigation. And we might make some stub out, let's say if you're in an apartment complex or condominium where it's, you know, one entity that's doing that, like a.
A concentration of demand.
Well, yes, you just make a stub out, but then it's going to be up to the apartment developer or to the condominium association as to how they're going to utilize that within the development.
You've got a triptych, would that go to places like Mosaic that's going to have that big grassy area?
Oh, yeah, Mosaic would be one of the first, yeah, one of the first reclaimed water customers as soon as there is reclaimed water available, because they're going to develop first. So they would have some use for it, unlike the, you know, 18-foot wide townhouse with a yard about the size of this tabletop here. I mean, it's, so it's not practical. And particularly since at this point in time, for residential use, the state has not authorized using reclaimed water for toilet flush.
And this language is subordinate to town ordinances, so if, who's going to have town-wide language, then we need to work on that. So if there isn't ordinance that applies, it will apply all over town. And you can have whatever statement you want. The key is availability, and this plant's the only game in town.
Are there further questions for Ken, Eagle?
I had more others. It had to, basically, the fire stations. Item one says that conveyance of the site shall occur as soon as reasonably practical followings of their occupancy, for the fire station building on the site. I think that's when the fire station is being built by the fire department.
Yes, yes.
I don't think that's going to work.
Well, I was going to say, if the fire department's trying to get a loan, then I think the bank's going to want, at least the land is collateral.
How about we substitute with site plan approval?
Something like that, yeah.
Could convey it at site plan approval.
I guess we would just want to, we would want to have some restriction on it that it's going to be used for a fire station.
I think you can make that happen.
Is that in the? Chief Percy's left the room, but I'm curious about this idea of co-located. Commissioner Farrell, did conversations with Archie Griffin shine any light on that idea of EMS, police, and fire being co-located?
We did, we spoke regarding that as having two separate structures. Actually, we used the example over there that you have it, Chatham Park, a small little outside dining area in a completely separate structure, side by side, but just on account of the workings and the hours, separate. This was with the EMS. Of course, PD would probably have a small. Of course, PD would probably have a smaller area than the EMS.
Before the PD may prefer to locate, like I say, in a commercial area, as you see in a lot of places, where they can leave their vehicles parked in certain areas.
Yeah. I guess I'm wondering if there's any inherent conflict, potential conflicts between vehicles leaving the site at the same time or something like that. I just don't know. I'd just like to hear from.
Yeah. It was more of a, kind of a privacy matter more than anything, I guess you say, you may say. And you just, instead of having everybody using the same restrooms and the same bidding facilities and all that, you would have your own more private facility. To be side by, I mean, like I said, a little, little small dining area, outside seating, recreation area, anything, that would, to be honest, because we actually even suggested the fire department subleasing to the county EMS.
Is Chief Percy available?
He was. Yes, he was.
He was right here, huh?
He just went back down.
I think it's generally understood the fire department's trying to do their own thing.
Yeah.
Police probably too.
No, Chief Percy. I'm, I'm curious about your thoughts on the idea of potential for co-location of police outpost with a fire station.
That's, that's one thing I've looked at a little bit. I hadn't researched a whole lot, but it's a common practice now. I know the Apex Police and Fire do it, some of their substations, and it seems like a good joint effort, from what little bit I've heard about it, talked to some friends and working those agencies. So, I definitely think it would be something worth investigating, looking into. A lot, a lot of emergency responder public safety centers are now, like, sharing those type of facilities because the police department, you know, only needs smaller office locations for their substations, because you have minimal support staff there, and it's really an area for officers to come, meet people in that community, catch up on reports, and you'll have, you know, depending on the size of the substation, some administrative people there maybe. So, it would definitely be an option worth looking into.
Wasn't aware of precedent there.
Yeah, like, if you go down Highway fifty-five between Apex and Holly Springs, there's one right there on the left, the other side of US one, and I think there's a couple more there, and there's some other, other places that are utilizing facilities like that. It's basically like a two bay fire station, which has a, you know, an engine and a tanker or whatever type truck, and then a small police substation on the other side. So, there are facilities like that used in this general area.
Thank you.
It'd be more efficient.
Yep.
Nothing to structure or share.
You've got interim.
So, Chief Farrell, was the chief adverse or interested in that kind of sharing?
Oh, well, as far as the separation, it was more between county EMS and the fire department, and of course Percy was not at the meeting, so we did not actually discuss PD.
Yeah, I was actually out of town that week. They had the meeting, I was on vacation, sorry about that.
But in some way, those are questions if you worked out a building plan phase. I guess the first was a question.
And a lot of, the road just makes a lot of difference. We have to know roads. We have to know the roads at times that we can get to certain areas.
Yeah, fortunately, us and the police side.
Just far right here.
Fortunately, us and the police side, we're not graded like a fire department is. Our department has to have for the ISO ratings, but then so many miles of a station, and can't be as the crow flies, it's like driving miles. Whereas we, obviously, our response times are a little quicker because of our equipment. And we're out there in that area more often. So, it's, we need to be in those communities as we grow with our substations, but we have more flexibility than, per se, a fire department because of their ISO rating, and that's just my experience, I've been in the fire department thirteen years too. So, we, we would have a little more flexibility on the location than the fire department would. So, I would, if we were to look into that and solve this people, obviously, I would say let's be flexible and work with the fire department locations, because they need to be geographically positioned to keep that ISO rating, and we want that for our customers, because lower insurance rates is better services and better response times. So, that'd be something we'd want to look at and work with along.
Thank you, Chief. The comment on the line that was marked out about.
Yep.
Not letting us know sharing, but they couldn't leave it.
Dave, do you, sharing space with EMS and police, do you think that acreage decided is still adequate or could be considered?
I redid the site plan based on a separate facility, just to test it.
Yeah.
And the two and a half, that changed to two and a half, three acres. The plan I did was two point six acres, and that was actually a bigger building than you'd been using for your fire stations that was using the Holly Springs, or the Apex example Chief was talking about where they co-located all those. And so, I used the same building, but then, and I can provide you a drawing if you'd like to see it, but provided, provided a separate building in addition to that same footprint size.
Is that the basis for arriving at, or you did that after the fact?
Well, when we, when we were meeting, I had originally had that drawing done just to know.
Okay.
The typical size and just from other examples, we were, you, you typical sizes.
With square one or two?
Square one or two.
Jeff?
So, section number three, there's a part marked out that says we can't, that the fire department can't simply space to the police department or EMS provider, so we might wanna look at that if we're gonna be doing a shared space.
I think it probably warrants R.C. Griffin and Chief Percy getting together.
Well, I think that the reason that that was deleted was because Commissioner Farrell raised a concern about not having them in the same building.
Build the same site, just not the same four walls.
Okay, where are we here now? We, we still need to hear from Paul Horn with respect to his memorandum too. Are there any further questions for Ken Eagle? If not, let's go.
Thank you, Mike.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, Matt. Sure. Excuse me.
I thought this was a really excellent memo. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, in thirty years, using typical EPA standards, the operating and maintenance cost alone will exceed our overall budget for the time. So, that's, when you're planning a city, you're planning this amount of growth, these are the numbers that you're, you're really looking at, that puts it in context. Currently, Apex, which has a population of just under forty-seven thousand, has operations and maintenance budget of a little over four million. Chapel Hill, a population of sixty-one thousand, has an operating, operation and maintenance budget of a little over seven million. Carries closer to eighteen million per year with a population of hundred sixty-three, seven twenty-eight. This doesn't include any capital expenses, but as I've laid out in that memo, you're gonna be looking at hundreds of thousands. These are just planning level, order of magnitude costs, but that's what you're looking at as far as expenditures.
Are there questions from Paul or Paul? As far as to this very impressive and dire projection?
Well, Paul, I was a little confused about the spreadsheet, what it was documenting and telling me. And I didn't immediately unt, I still don't actually understand the color coding of pink, gray, and green.
Oh, I, if it was a zero, I marked it gray because there's two columns indicating a range, and this is really coarse, back to the napkin, as I preface, but we've done more sophisticated numbers, and they're still in that range of hundred and three hundred some thousand. For two hundred thousand, just looking at a park, there'd be more expenses outside of tons that they're not responsible for. I'm sorry, the pink was for improvement, that's the white was just for land, that's.
You've got a couple of categories in here, so this conservation land, one item is a hundred acres, one seven hundred and twelve acres, and I estimate a cost anywhere from five million to thirty-five million. So, I was confused about what happened.
Simply the amount of land that you choose for conservation land, and we can refine this to a level of sophistication of Gary Hartong's analysis for sort of, so this is just a real coarse level of things, and I think you can take it apart a little bit above on one side, below on one side, but that range of, of figures is pretty much just fine.
The other reason I ask is it says seven hundred and twelve acres of conservation land. Are you taking some of the open space and adding it into Clark's equation as conservation land?
Again, you could choose to do that. That was one of the highest, to the decision from surveys that we got back, that was one of the highest priorities from your citizens, was conservation land.
If you call conservation land, you park land, not separated, so if this thing would be, some of park space would be conservation.
Well, I think we had two distinct numbers, open space was thirteen hundred and twenty and park land was six sixty-seven, and they were distinguished in those volumes.
In the bank, it's not, it's not understanding that when you're doing parks, are you talking about the?
I mean, the parks could be chosen to be used as.
Right.
Right. But the park land would have been limited to six sixty-seven, so if we're trying to quantify it, the cost on something, right, that goes beyond six sixty-seven, and we're talking about something other than just parks, so I'm just trying to get clarity on what this is, you know, trying to.
It could be like a conservation area that's considered a park, like you want to be considered a park that just has limited, you know, no baseball fields, just have trails or whatever.
I think what Paul's trying to say is, this is what you think we need for all the development, all the folks that live in Chatham Park and in the town, is how much these places, the trails, the parkland, it's not necessarily trying to fit parks within six sixty-seven or the thirteen hundred and twenty open space. It is, they, we understand that, but we might need more.
But we're talking of now, what, we're trying to identify what kind of parks are needed.
Yes, so the, so the real answer is, are you ever going to allow Chatham Park to deduct from six sixty-seven or thirteen twenty using P and L?
I understand the part, not the.
Right.
Yeah.
And if, if we identify that we need more, then is it in our best interest to allow them to deduct acreage from their toes? When, when we can, on the back of the math, can kind of do this and Paul's done more now, we can say that we need more. And that's just the sort.
Maintain the level of parks that we have now.
Yeah, just the sort.
Maintain the level of service.
Right, right. Or to better, yeah.
The essential.
So, that's sort of the, the analysis that we're trying to, to provide for you. It's not trying to fit within the box of the master plan, we understand the master plan, but it's to say, yeah, we need that plus, and what do we, what's that going to cost for us? What decisions are going to need to be made later down the line? Every time a subdivision comes to Chatham Park, they may provide greenways and parkland, but is it going to be built and paid for by Chatham Park and taken off the back end of the six sixty-seven or the thirteen twenty? And that's really, I think, the correction in the, in the, where, where you all want to consider that. And, and maybe it's not nice to answer that question, but really think hard about using P and L in the future, and maybe use that very sparingly when it comes to, to developing Chatham Park.
We don't think that money that's required to go back into parks somewhere.
Right, so I think if, if P and L is paid for parks, that it should go to, to parks specifically to that area that, that parks that P and L pays, doesn't necessarily have to do that. We don't currently have that now, so people pay P and L all the time. We do park upgrades or community house upgrades, so we don't currently operate them again.
Well, thanks for the clarification, because I was thinking this was self-contained to Chatham Park.
I think to have a discussion on parks in Chatham Park and being the largest development, you sort of have to think city with town line, and Paul is working on master plans that is really going to help us kind of get to the answers of future parks. We understand that that plan is going to be available sometime within the next six weeks or so, so maybe the first, latter part of July, and so we'd like to be able to provide that to you all at the next meeting if it's available, or prior to that, so you can, you can read the reports from the consultant and make an informed decision on all parks and not just Chatham Park.
Right, but we're dealing with an additional element right now.
Yeah.
So, I understand.
We are.
And I know that we are gonna need parks outside of Chatham Park.
We, we.
That's a given, we know that, and we decided that six hundred and sixty-seven acres was the amount of parkland in Chatham Park, and so what do we do with that?
Yeah, and yeah, I think we go back to the P and L discussion, and really understanding what that means for the six sixty-seven.
And I think I hear a message is, take the land.
Absolutely.
Take the land.
Yeah.
Take the land. Why would we take land with improvements on it?
Because there's a special assessment district, there's negotiations, there are other mechanisms as articulated in the memo, forehand like that improvement, just as you would other infrastructure.
So, you totally discard the whole idea that our, that our subdivision ordinance has rules about facilities?
No, no, I think that's part of the discussion, that, that you all might want to keep interjecting into this. I think the other side may have a different interpretation on that. I think that's what the ears from Paul would be, is that being very vicious in using P and L. So, what I would say to you all is, react, have a discussion with Chatham Park as to what, what if we don't use P and L? How, how would you, how do you provide for parks? How do we have greenways? How do you all have greenways and parks to market to your future residents? How do you? How do you envision that happening? And it's going to be a combination, one, it's going to be a combination between town and developer, but we're hearing options from the development side that they could get reimbursed for the cost. That would be part of this special assessment district, but we assure parkland and they assure that it's built, that they get reimbursed. That might work. But I think it's for you all to have the discussion with Chatham Park as to, okay, what if we don't do P and L? What do you do? Because I haven't heard from Chatham Parks answer that question, because they're going down to P and L back. So that's where you need to call to Chatham Park now. That's really where we're, where we're at. I think all the analysis Paul has given you, all the things that we will discuss in the master plan is all valid for the town and the needs that we will, that we'll have, but how do we, how do we talk to Chatham Park about this new parks and greenways?
Any questions for Paul?
Paul? Neighborhood park improvements, 11 of these facilities, 11 10-acre parks, and it's got a price of $2 million per, and then it just says based on, for a typical park? What is that?
We're looking at a 10-acre park, some type of multi-use field, rectangular, some type of active court, basketball, tennis, some kind of combination of that, some kind of walking trail on the higher end, some kind of splash pad that keeps us out of the pool business for neighborhood parks, and a bathroom facility, which as you well know is quite expensive for a square foot. So that's kind of the basic 10-acre park. Whoever's providing that, whether the town's providing that, whether a developer's providing that, that's kind of our template that we're going for, for providing those neighborhood services within a half-mile walk to that.
Is that, just, okay, so I think the level of service is 10 acres per thousand residents, based on 667, which you indicate is a 1979 standard?
That's correct.
But today, we actually have 23 acres per thousand?
That's correct.
You've got 103 acres of parkland?
Cary has 17 of developed parkland, developed parkland per thousand people, per comparison. So that's, they have a pretty high quality of life in Cary, I think they have a very robust park system.
Do you know how their parks were developed and who funded them?
That would be a long discussion. I could find that out.
Short discussion, I know, I was there.
Would you weigh in?
They did it with their, I mean, they, nobody of these examples requires both land and a fee. And all these budgets you're talking about has done it based on tax revenue and the ability to fund it through bonds and other things because of growth.
Now, did you mean to say land and facilities?
Land dedication only, or fee in lieu of.
Or fee.
Yeah, but nobody is doing both. And much of, much of this data in here is just not accurate, and this is a Chatham, I mean, you started going there with your questions, because it's like it's not acknowledging what the master plan requires. I mean, this comes to 1,400 acres of saying, this is what you need to provide, well, whether you need, somebody thinks we need to provide it or not, a parkland, the master plan says it's a maximum of 677. And 23 acres of, I don't think that's your level of service. You got, you got 50, you got half of that from 3M's. That is not something, that's a normal situation, and it's certainly not what your proposed ordinance requires. Your level of service is your one, actually, your proposed ordinance is saying 135th instead of 133rd. I don't know if that's a mistake, you're going in the other direction, but your level, that calculates out the 10 or 11 acres per thousand population when you run those numbers of what you propose, what you do now in your existing ordinance, and what you propose in your proposed ordinance.
And that would roughly approximate the 667? So if you had all of that land in, you'd have the 10 acres per.
But that's for you, I'm talking about Pittsburgh and not Chatham Park. We're doing it at 125th to accelerate it.
I think ultimately it's capped at 133rd, but it's just accelerated, as you said, to 125th.
Yeah, but, yeah, if we never get to, if we get to 16,000 units and we provided that 667, we'll see if we get to that 22,000, but.
I believe Chapel Hill, for any multifamily development, requires developed facilities.
Chapel Hill has a combination of land, and they want, whatever the, what the number is, three-fourths of it, a minimum of three-fourths, they want to be land, and then you're allowed to use P for the other quarter of it. And the amount varies depending on the, is that a district or the house?
In the multifamily realm, it is required dedication and improvement, and paying in lieu is an option. And I think the requirement is 120, so 5% of the land.
It's a little after 10:00. Is there a talk that we need to pursue to the budget, or further questions to Paul or Jeff?
Paul, you mentioned you have more accurate calculations.
We do, primarily for the entire town. This was more limited to needs within Chatham Park, and obviously left off rec centers, aquatics, no operating, operations and maintenance costs.
Now, is this information that will probably be contained within the master plan?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Our consultant would be available for a check-in with you and further this discussion, I think August 13th, I think we could have something which could inform this discussion and have him available to answer your questions in more depth. I can certainly do so as well, but I think that would be a worthwhile discussion, given the, just the dollar figures that we're looking at here. And to be clear, it's not necessarily assumed the town would incur these costs, you know, that, or the Chatham Park would incur these costs. This is a, this is a, just an examination of your needs. Whoever's going to provide those, however they're going to be provided, or you don't provide them, I know there's plans to work with YMCA for pools and rec centers and that kind of thing, irrespective of who ends up paying for these things and providing them whatever level of exchange that is, whether it's dollars and, whatever that unit is, this is what you're going to need to remain competitive, to attract businesses, to attract retirees, to maintain the quality of life that you currently enjoy in Pittsburgh. And it's in everybody's mutual interest to have these facilities, so the discussion now is really how do we get there?
I may be reading commas and decimal points wrong, but this is, this high-range number is $2 billion? 107, what, 200 million dollars, is that what it is?
Yeah.
That may be a typo on my, on my card for that.
No, no, I think it's what it's saying.
Well, it is, and the sub, and the subtotal low range is 103 billion. So I, yeah. And there's something wrong with this, but.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
That's entirely possible. I think the bottom-line numbers are still accurate.
Yeah, they're.
This was produced really quickly when I found out when this was going on the agenda and prepared Tuesday before I had to leave for a conference, so it was really quick, and I think I prefaced it, these were back of the number figures, but again, I think we can slice and dice this and come up with, the bottom line is you're still going to have hundreds of thousands of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars in parks' needs, whether there's an error on line three or line six.
Any further questions, let's move to the next agenda item.
Thank you, Paul.
Can we ask, I mean, just one more question to finish that out. Are we trying to get this resolved? I mean, we've been working on this for eight months on public facilities. So what do, what do we need to do to bring some closure to it?
Yeah, I understand your interest in doing that, but I think the board's dealing with a variety of issues on, on this facilities element, and, and I feel like you just got to give it some closer.
Oh, I mean, I'm not saying we're going to resolve tonight, I'm just.
No, I think we're getting close on that one.
Doesn't feel like it.
I do have a big, big, big question mark about reuse water, reclaimed water, and hopefully the examination of the master, reexamination of the master plan will inform that section. And I think we do need to have a continued rumination, really think about these questions of how park development and financing will proceed with the other things that are on the table, like the special assessment district. Just as one example?
Yeah, I still want to, I probably need to understand the special assessment district because we're basically paying twice. Our residents are paying their taxes, and then they're paying the assessment on top of that for public facilities that everyone in Pittsburgh will be able to use. And so I'm just trying to understand how that works fairly.
I would like it similar to.
Well, as long as standing, the special assessment district is a mechanism for actually deferring payment and allowing it to be stretched out over a period of time as to upfront costs for the citizens, residents, businesses, all of those paying into it.
You're getting reimbursed, is my understanding.
Well, but the residents are paying, they pay their annual taxes to you, which should cover public facilities that everybody else is paying, and then they're paying the assessment to pay for the $200 million of parks, or whatever else you want to fill in the blank with, and that goes on top of that. So they get two hits on this, that anybody else in Pittsburgh gets to use these parks, and they just pay their, their normal tax.
The parks are in the PDD, they're an asset and a feature and attraction to.
So then we can just use them with Chatham Park residents, and they're not open to anybody else. Is that what you're saying? Well, that's what I'm saying, anybody else can use that, and they get to benefit from that.
You're helping pay for things that we wouldn't ordinarily build except for Chatham Park.
But you're getting a tax revenue that you would not normally get if it was not for the growth of Chatham Park.
But we don't get that right away.
Well, right away is, you get it, and, you know, we've shown you the numbers, and we'll show you the numbers more, but I don't know that anybody's really looked at that, but the amount, and that's why, when they talk about these, these really high budgets and other things that are going to stop, they're doing that based on the, they're not doing it on a fee and a land dedication. They don't do both, they do one. And they don't have tax assessment districts for, you know, the big, the big PUDs paying for that. So I'm just trying to see what apples and apples are, because it just doesn't appear to be occurring here.
I think in chiming in on that, Paul was talking about August 13th, that we're going to get some consultant to come tell us, and we've been working on this thing for two years, and all of y'all have sort of looked at us and said, hey, we're going to get through these elements. We get there, and we're down to where parks, I think Commissioner Fioco will issue, Jay, are you okay with the file? But we've been in over, it seemed like every time we come here, it's another give, 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 and we just want to get to the end of what it is you want us to do.
And I want to point out, a lot of times, you come back with us with major changes, major changes.
We make changes based on what the dialogue gives tonight.
But then, but then you add things that we didn't talk about, not necessarily tonight, but in the past, so that's, that's slowed things down, but we, I think everybody wants to pardon us, I don't think we're going to.
We just appealed to you to help us finish, I mean, what are we down to? Are we down to parks and reclaimed water on these elements, on the public facilities?
I think I am, down to parks, and as you can tell, struggling with it.
Okay. Is there anything else?
I actually think we're close to, as Commissioner Paul had indicated, I think we're close to, if you want to complete this one.
But based on what set of documents? I mean, close on what? I mean, we.
That's what we had tonight. In reference to the parks in August 13th, I think he was just referring to that you wanted a more in-depth analysis of this, but I don't think that that would be in terms of making a determination that Chatham Park's doing this. I think anyone that wanted this for FYI.
This is all Chatham Park in these numbers.
But I know it is, but I think it's more of an FYI.
But I would also request that we, that the consultant at least talk to us, because some of these numbers are so inaccurate that at least he hears, I don't know if he doesn't understand the master plan, I don't know if he doesn't, I mean, we're building greenways for half the price that he's got in here for greenway construction.
Did you hear Paul say, what I heard, understood Paul to say was that these were numbers he came up with on short notice, and that he's not pretending that these are final numbers, that it's just his best shot at coming up with numbers on short notice? So I don't think that any of us, I mean, I feel like I totally understand that he means that those aren't real numbers, that there's a rough idea.
Okay, so I guess based on that, we're expecting them to come down?
These aren't, these aren't firm numbers, Chuck. This is, this is an effort for the board to grapple with magnitude of the challenge in the future that we're facing initially. And, and I would appreciate some patience from your gentlemen, that this is a board that is contemplating trying to get to 60,000 people. That is a huge undertaking for a community of this size, huge. And we're taking it very seriously, I think all of us on this board are taking it very seriously. And the level of service question is important, because we do want to be a center of excellence in many different ways, not just in Chatham Park, but the entire town of Pittsburgh wants to be excellent. So please forgive us if we take some time to wrap our heads around very large financial questions. That's what I'm asking for. And I hear time and time again, you're going to have the tax revenues. We haven't gotten to that place yet, I think, where any of us really understand what our budget's going to look like in 2025, alone 2030. And these are very, very important questions, I know, I'm sure you appreciate it, so I, we do need to take some time. And, and I hope that we can, most importantly, think about specifically that special assessment district, and how that works to the immediate benefit of the residents and businesses that you'll be attracting. Use that mechanism to develop your parks. You want the, the parks to be shining the day that the development, immediately adjacent developments open and are sold, I would imagine. I would imagine. That's, that's what I'm, I felt the need to get that. I appreciate you hearing me.
And echo what Paul mentioned a moment ago was finding that balance, that equity where both Chatham Park and the town are contributing to this, this fabric. And finding where that spot is, that's the thing I'm struggling with, so that you guys understand that. Well, I don't want to say you guys are going to build everything. I don't want to say you're not going to build anything. I want to find that place and I'm working hard to find that spot. And I'm looking at past experience as a way to inform myself. I'm looking at other municipalities and other jurisdictions and finding ways of there managing this very difficult question. So that's what I'm grappling with and struggling with.
Jeff came from a fast-growing community. Jeff, how'd the parks get built down there?
Built, we gave land and now built parks, ponds.
And it's worked good? And then the revenue came? And look, growth begins the revenue. If there's no growth, there's no need for that many parks.
Retne is privately given to, you know, privately, you know, neighborhood pools and playgrounds. Those things are HOA, DOA-driven, that are not necessarily public. They go to a need to serve those residents. So that's part of the discussion too. We don't need, if we've got 20 pools in town with every subdivision pool, we might not need an aquatic center. Hey, that's just things to think about. But that's where Holly Springs was, we, every subdivision had pool. And, but I think eventually there's going to be a desire to have an aquatic center that's just like towns they grow at. But initially, we didn't need it. And I'm not, I'm not sure that Paul is saying we needed five years from now. The survey, it says that's the hot bird approach to the survey. There's, there's things to think about.
And really, we're talking about public parks and I'm thinking, and it just tells me I'm correct, that these subdivisions that had these pools, they had a clubhouse, then a pool and it was, no?
Yes, no, they had all that.
And that was probably just private for those residents and the homeowners association paid to maintain it.
Yeah.
And all the residents paid to it and it's exclusive.
Yeah.
Right. So we're talking about public parks.
We are, yeah. And that goes, again, we're trying to speak to the master plan.
Right.
But I think the definition of parkland has been there too, where it could be more partially public and private. So you want, you want to think about that as well. That might, well, if it's necessarily all public.
Publicly accessible, I think, is what it's been on the project, going to subdue the home or any things like that.
I think Jay Carroll has made a motion to...
Yeah, I just want one little question. Chuck mentioned something about the double tax, the special assessment tax. If I'm not mistaken, Tim was the one that asked about that several months ago. Is that not correct? I'm just, I may be wrong, but I thought I heard him up there on the podium say, you admit a special assessment tax.
No, that's absolutely true. I mean, what, what that helps us do is, as Mr. Fiocco was talking about, just the, the spreading out of funding. But what, but then we, we just have to manage how, how this number goes. Other, I mean, we're competing against every other subdivision out there. And you sell a house that's the same price here and against what's in Briar Chapel, same house, same price, and they're paying more assessment for something that everybody in Pittsburgh is using and even people in Chatham, in Briar Chapel can use. So, I mean, it's, it's more of a managed...
Do they have a tax at Briar Chapel?
No, they're paying 900, I think they pay $900 to the county per resident, I mean, per unit for recreation.
They develop place that for you.
And that's kind of like the impact fee that's kind of causing losses at some places.
No, recreation fees are different. I'd like to make a motion, take a five-minute break.
I would say Jay Carroll is very second to that. Thank you, our panel of all, those in favor, please. All right, we're back in session. Is there a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Beth Wilson Solley. Those in favor, please, with your hand, I.
Aye.
Those opposed. It proves unanimously. Pam Baldwin has a, has a motion to make.
I would like to make a motion that we actually look at the Main Street budget now instead of putting on a new business and get it all off. And then that way we do a public budget.
Center budget.
Is there a second to Pam Baldwin's motion?
Second.
So made by, motion made by Pam Baldwin, seconded by Beth Wilson Solley. Those in favor, please, with your hand, I.
Aye.
So we're taking a look at item number two from the consent agenda and this is going to lead us to...
I guess it was made, but I may have a little confusion on this and I spoke to Brian about it. But the, in the first paragraph, it, where it says it pledges commitment of a paid or volunteer. I took that as a, a paid person straight off. He informed me that it could be a paid person or a volunteer. And under seeing, we have a volunteer person, so...
We've got nothing but volunteer.
That's where I had a name. One other little, no, nothing drastic. Well, it's on page, page, but it's not that. I'll just read it real quick. It says the Main Street's program budget should be adequate. I don't know what adequate is. It doesn't give you a dollar amount.
What are you looking for?
Number 11 right here, about three pages over. Says the Main Street program's budget should be adequate to achieve the program's goal. The dollar amount that is adequate for a program budget may vary.
Yeah, I think what that's saying is all, all the programs are different throughout the state. And so you set out goals and so you try to get a budget that allows you to achieve those goals. So I think that's all of the disdain is that the program should have a budget that supports its goals.
Okay.
As I think any endeavor probably should do.
Yeah.
I think this is all boilerplate language from the Main Street program that we've adopted for many years since 2011.
Right.
Just to stay in the program.
On the subject of Main Street, I just want to express gratitude that we have volunteered so many hours and have done a lot of good things for this community. We're very happy to.
That was all I had. I mean, I may have shouldn't just omitted it, I guess.
No, don't omit it.
It's all here.
No.
Skip, omit, whatever.
No, no.
Maybe asleep in a minute.
Then let's take it. Then is there a motion then to approve consent item number two as new business number one?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Beth Wilson Solley. Those in favor, please, with your hand, I.
Aye.
Those opposed. Let me just hook you on home now.
Thank you very much.
We're, we're moving then to section number six of old business. And this is the proposal for the manager's recommended budget for fiscal year 2018-19. Hard work by Brian Bruce Beck and Helen Beach. How do we want to approach this? Do you want to give our views, Brian Bruce Beck?
Just, just really quick, just a couple of comments and then we can take as much or as little time out as we can like. Back on June 11, we held a public hearing as required. At that time, you provided some feedback regarding what sort of changes, modifications, or additions or corrections at that time that you'd like to see. We've gone back since that meeting and taken a look at those changes and tried to reconcile that with, with our current projected revenues. Made some changes and I think the budget that you have tonight most accurately reflects those wishes while at the same time presenting a balanced budget as it stands right now. In the memo, I outlined, or I provide bullets on where the actual changes to this version of the budget that you have before you this evening changed from the budget that you reviewed back on June 11. It was presented to the public. And I won't go through each one of those bullets other than to say that, that we were able to make some, some corrections to the budget. So it was a productive exercise in terms of addressing some payroll concerns, addressing, addressing the, the request to increase the Main Street budget from 50,000 to 60,000 and to also reallocate the, reallocate the staff improvement money from recreation to, to Main Street. So you see the figure in there that's been requested by Commissioner Fiocco. The mayor also made a suggestion for what's something that, this is a working title, if you want to change it, that's fine. Added line item 5,400 for what we're calling sustainable environmental programming, an amount of $10,000. And we've got, I think I listed one, but really we've got two different activities that can be attributed to this line item. One is the resumption of replacing the older sodium lights or whatever the, whatever they're calling them, whatever they're calling our older lights, I guess. With the more energy efficient LED lights. But keep in mind, we have been, we have been installing, or Duke Energy has been installing LED lights when, when lights fail or when new lights are going in. So LED lights have been installed, but what we haven't been doing is going through and just actively replacing the older ones. And so there is a cost to that. And we've just sort of estimated what we can spend this year as, as part of that type of activity under this sustainable environmental program. Also too, with that, it's a relatively, relatively low cost item would be something that Mayor Perry identified as a need, which is to try to, try to show some leadership in the community as far as reducing the number of plastic bags that are used in, in retail in the town. And one way to do that would be to consider using reusable bags, maybe with town logo and so forth. And, you know, distributing those either at stores or during the festivals or something along those lines. And so, so we've added that, that line item there. We've, we've going through and, and, you know, continuing the adjustments in enterprise fund. We did manage to right-size one particular estimated cost down, which provided some added, which provided some, a little bit of leeway. We've adjusted, adjusted payroll in a couple of instances. And then another item in particular that I would draw your attention to is in order to raise revenue on the enterprise side was to institute credit card payment fee of $2 per transaction. You'll recall that currently our web-based, our web-based and credit card-based payments for water and sewer bills are currently provided at no charge. This is rather unique. Most communities do actually have a charge of some sort. The county currently, for example, charges $3.95 per transaction. They also limit, they also have a ceiling on the amount of transaction that can take place. If it's $500, we currently don't have an official limit on that. So what we're doing is proposing that we, that we institute a $2 per transaction fee. Based on some of our, our research, we don't, we haven't found that that has a chilling effect on other communities in terms of paying. So, and there are some costs actually involved currently that we're incurring that are not, that we're actually paying. Providing this service, I think others gone over this, starting to retreating at other times. We're actually providing the service and paying for it as a convenience to customers, which is fine. But this allows us to recoup some of that convenience. And then finally, or, yeah, I guess finally, we're proposing to, yeah, we're upping the fee. Increasing the revenue from penalty is just by a little bit. Trending in previous years and we're trending this year. So we think that's an accurate, more accurate reflection. And so we're, I think, willing to bank on, on that increase in enterprise as well. So with that, that's, those are the essential changes from this version to the last version. Again, it's balanced, it's, what we're presenting is a balanced budget without a tax increase, without increases in fees for, you know, for regular user fees for water and sewer. And I think is, is definitely more aggressive than previous budgets in terms of service. Technical hoodling factoring in, some of the staff changes that we're proposing. Notably, an extra position for flight, which was a board priority and also an extra position in, in utilities to increase customer service on that front as well. So with that, I would open for any questions or concerns. I'm not going to go line item by line item, but, but, you know, certainly if there are questions about details you want to get into, we're, we're here to, to help do that, help answer any questions you have. As, as you're also probably aware, we're looking at sort of a timeline like the other years as far as passing this by June, by June 30th. So if you don't have the wherewithal tonight to do this, I would just request that maybe we consider another night, next few days to tackle it. With that, I guess I would open up pretty how it's a question.
Well, one other feature that you did not mention about this budget is it's not appropriating any fund balances.
Well, that's the balance part.
So that's the balance part?
Yeah.
Well, officially, it's not a balanced budget.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's why, I would consider balanced budget one, it doesn't appropriate fund.
Well, seconding that.
I mean, you balance, yeah, true, technically you balance it.
I don't think you have a voice.
Always, always a joker.
Actually, I'm trying to think, well, Lord.
I have just one question, just kind of my curiosity, on the credit card payment, $2 transaction, is the town just adding this or do we have contractors that's adding this fee?
We would add it.
We add it on each bill?
Right, we get, right, it would, it would go...
No matter what bill it is, it's just a $2 fee?
Just $2, yes. So we get, we get a percentage charge per transaction. And we would just do a flat charge because that's easier, I mean, that's easier obviously for me in terms of projecting how much we would get. And I think that's just easier for the customer. If they know it's just $2, they don't have to calculate what that, if we did like a 3% charge, I don't, they don't need to calculate what that is.
I heard a group had a gentleman come by and tried to, they're kind of trying to sell a deal that worried people that use credit. We had saved one half percent of your credits and they put the credit back on your card. I had, we had changed anything or anything. We've been trying to sell around town with this.
No, we would be using our same platform that we're currently using and we would, we would have...
Great, great big problem.
Yeah.
On page 19, under administration, there's a tax billing and collection line item 331. item three thirty-one, which seems to fluctuate from what I was assuming that why it fluctuated that way.
So that line is related to what we pay to the county for doing our, what the county and the D M P for doing the collection of our taxes. So part of the reason that fluctuated was because previously it was not getting recorded properly. We were recording it net of the charges and not recording the actual charges. So that, I just adjusted. So now, on the revenue side, the revenues are actually showing higher than not showing net of the expenses. So there's not actually less money that's going out.
On page twenty-two, under the engineering budget, is our decrease in salaries that the results of our mid-year purchase of the, I mean, hiring of the engineers?
No, I just reallocated, so I have a portion of the engineering salary allocated to the water and sewer at the enterprise side. So when we adjusted the enterprise side and we thought we had that extra money on the enterprise side, I reallocated a little bit more of the engineering position to that side so that I had money on the general fund side.
There are also two line items on that page, four ninety and six hundred, that both have to do with stormwater. And I wondered, what's the difference? And is this for stormwater fees, I mean, stormwater expenditure, which are covered by fees?
Yes, they are. The difference, I believe, is that the four ninety was a stormwater program that was started before we started collecting the stormwater fees. So that was not originally covered by stormwater fees. And then the other one, the six hundred, we opened that when we started collecting the stormwater fees. And, but both of those, I sort of, I have covered by the projected stormwater.
So you're projecting an increase of twenty-two to twenty-two thousand dollars?
We have collected, yeah, we have collected this year around, I believe it's around ninety thousand dollars in stormwater fees, which is significantly more than what I had originally projected.
I'm just curious about this, this is the one about the A B C revenues, that the A B C revenues for law enforcement, is that, is it going up forty to increase?
That's the percentage that they pay for the, I might get this wrong, that's the percentage they pay for.
I still want the A B C inspections and holdups.
Oh, I see, okay.
And those numbers I just took from their projected budget.
That's a statutorily mandated percentage they have to give for the agency they contract with. And that may have went down because we were doing it for the county too, but we backed it up.
Yeah, no, it's going up.
Yeah, oh, did?
Do you still go around and do, do you still go around and do the county A B C stuff?
No, we don't do the county, we just do the town.
I guess one thing I was curious about too is that knowing how difficult sometimes it is to get funds from D O T or funds from other agencies of the state, do we need to be about building our capital budget in a much more purposeful kind of way?
Can you elaborate on that?
It does look like we have much except for there's the public works, fifty-seven thousand or something, and then there's ninety thousand in recreation, outlay and.
Are you, are you dealing with the capital improvement plan? Or what?
That's what I was hearing back, right, okay. Well, we've got a lot, we've got a lot of money today and we're just making all that happen. Of course, I recognize some of us can be through loans too, but do we, do we need to more purposefully build up surplus so that we can fund some of these?
I think in a general sense, the answer to your question is yes, but it's not quite that simple. I mean, we have to actually have, I mean, we do have, we do have a decent fund balance now currently, which would most likely be used at some future date to help finance a couple of really large projects, namely Newtown Hall project. I think we need to make sure that we have, you know, sufficient money in hand to be able to accommodate that project without, you know, burdening current taxpayers any more than we have to, and we'll get help with that. But, but we have to have sufficient revenue, I think, before we really start getting impressive with a capital improvement plan that knocks off a number of these items. You know, we probably do need to start building up our adware revenue in particular in order to, you know, increase cash on hand for some of these other expenses. But the capital improvement plan in and of itself is really just sort of, it's not, it's not a budget per se, but it's a, it's kind of a guideline for some of the expenses that we would have in the future coming up that cost more than fifty thousand dollars that are, you know, as we find out in capital nature. And there are different ways, as you can see, that we would fund those either through cash, fund balance, grants, bonds, loans, combination, share and part and so forth. And so, yeah, there's a lot of things that we have to do and, you know, some of these things are taken incrementally over time and some of them can be built up almost immediately. So it's kind of a, it's kind of an ongoing battle. But I think in a couple of instances, you know, that's why we, that's why we do the asset man, those two asset management grants that we received, the first one for the sanitary sewer collection system, and then the one that we've got coming up that we're just starting is for the water distribution system. Those kind of help us build in some, some planning as far as how do we accommodate the necessary repairs and things like that. Other things, you know, we're going to have to look at grant funding, for example, but that's a lot harder now than it was, you know, ten years ago.
I'd say I greatly appreciate the sustainable environmental program line item and I thank you for including that. It'll be a real pleasure. One of the things that both Brian Grisbeck and I have talked about doing is to look closer at that coal ash treatment fee, what it is that Duke Power Energy, whatever they are, what they promised that they would do to help us make transitions and do underground, very underground lines, but also in general help them to plan for more economic energy.
On that note, yeah, I greatly admire the thought and the intent from Mr. Grisbeck of the idea of replacing the older streetlights with LEDs. Would want us to proceed with caution because my understanding is that other communities have been negotiating with Duke Energy, leveraged their finances and gotten the whole thing done that way. I know Asheville has done that. And, yeah, I would just take for us to spend from unnecessary funds if we could get it built into our rate system. And I guess to further emphasize that, I once met a man who previously worked in the progress energy division that oversaw all the streetlights throughout the state or through their progress territory. And he said that the utilities commission assigned rate of return for that specific service was very lucrative. So I kind of have a lot of skepticism on coughing up additional money for that unless we have pushed it really hard first. And Mr. Grisbeck, again, I just want to commend you. I think it's an excellent, outstanding budget. I think you do a terrific job with this and I greatly appreciate your, your care and attention to detail and your insistence upon revisiting questions to further refine. You sharpened the pencil until the very last second and I really appreciate that. That's, you know, really, it's kind of embarrassing in a way because I owe a lot for the attention to detail part of your comment. I'm more of a dagger than I am an intended detail. Thank you.
No motion, are we ready to vote?
I would approve the motion.
Move by Michael Fiocco, second in my path, will control me to approve the two thousand eighteen nineteen annual operating budget as presented. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
This post, motion carries unanimously. Manager, so, yeah, one of the things that Brian Grisbeck and I talked about doing is moving this to the, to the area where we talk about, the updates. Because we're all so exhausted by the time we get here, including Brian Grisbeck. And with great admiration, I must say, look at this here. I mean, we might have a larger audience by doing manager updates earlier in the agenda because we're, we're up to doing a lot of good things these days and it would be lovely to have those more completely recognized. But since we didn't do that tonight, we'll try not to fall asleep during your updates.
No worries, it's, I'll try to be dynamic. The, of course, you guys all know about Summerfest on July first, we're finalizing from a staff perspective, we're finalizing some last minute preparations on that. There's a little bit of electrical work that, that we're anticipating having Duke Energy speaking of, I'm not trying to pick on completing by the end of this week, but it's getting The Newtown Hall, I just want to just talk about that just for a quick minute. You recall the last, last meeting, we had the pleasure of receiving an overview from Hobbs Architects. I do appreciate your time spent on that on a busy evening. The, I heard three main things from that. I know that the mayor indicated that she wanted, she wanted to sort of marinate on it for a couple of weeks, but I do think that actually you got more done than you thought. First of which, a couple of things that I heard, inside of the building, she's more administrative or office oriented, opposed to activity, which is a key question that we were kind of hoping to get at. The second was maintaining sufficient space for town operational needs, that's important. And I think that kind of relates to the first point. Then finally, maximizing the number of parking spaces. This gets to the question of did we want, did we want a site that, that was outdoor oriented, that had outdoor space, I don't know, just off the top of my head, outdoor space, things like that? Or did we want to provide a little bit more parking to help support downtown businesses? I thought I had heard, and this is not anything that we're actually going to tell at this point in time, that I thought I heard a slight lean towards parking spaces. So those three things, again, just kind of marinate on them, but I think what we'd like to do is then come back, have Hobbs come back for the board on July twenty-third, if that is at all possible, and try to get some, some continued discussion on this. That evening as well, I'd like to at least have for your perusal, a demolition bid package for the existing building, you don't make the decision on that night. The demolition bid package would just be something to kind of give you the scope of what we were doing and when we would go about doing it. We would, of course, allow the building to remain intact through the rest of this festival season, first Sunday season, and then look at knocking that down sometime after the holidays. So, soon after the holidays. I just wanted to kind of get, get that out, probably a little bit, and if you have any additional feedback or kind of answer questions, concerns, you know, feel free to shoot your line or otherwise continue marinating until the twenty-third. I put holidays. I'm sorry, the, the after, after Christmas. Yeah, because the first, I'm sorry, good question, because the first, the last first Sunday is actually in early December. And so we didn't, the thinking there was is because first Sunday is using that site now. In fact, they have increased the number of booth space by about a third just on that site alone, so. So Maria was the first one to come in and say, hey, is this going to be, you're not going to hear the building down, start building Newtown Hall by the time Summerfest rolls around? I says, no, don't worry about that. And that was, then the first Sunday people said, well, we want to make sure that we're able to use the site as well. And so I had kind of, I really wanted to knock that thing down myself if I needed to, but, but as of right now, I think we can get through the festival season and then, like I said, after Christmas, have, have a bid, have someone, have a contractor ready to go with the demolition project. That, that's clear as mud. New employees, real quick, the, I mean, you had the opportunity to meet Elizabeth this evening, we're going through, we gave her the tour today, started going over work plan, I'm going to continue with that tomorrow. It's, she hasn't, we haven't scared her off yet, but I was kind of afraid for a little while.
Tell us about her background, let us know what her, where she comes from and all that.
She's, talked about it in a meeting or two ago, the, she's from Holly Springs, has been there for about, she's there for about fourteen or fifteen years. Does, her strength is on plan review, but obviously, and that's obviously a big need of ours, is, you know, having, having the ability to review plans from the engineering side of things. We've got, in fact, we probably have hydrostructures slowed down on a couple of other things that we need them to do because right now we're spending a lot of time on plan review. That's, that's her fourth age, she's going to have a lot of efficiencies to that. So that's, that's a lot of what she did in Holly Springs, is kind of really helped organize and develop that, that area of functionality within their operations. And it was a big, I think was a big, it was a big attractive feature for us in hiring her every year. I could give you a full bio if you wanted to, like I could, like send you some of that. New police officers, I think you had seen the Facebook post, the, their pictures are over here on the side, if you can see them. We hired two, two officers and a reserve officer and I think we're, we're very fortunate to have had those folks working with us as well. I think Chief Crouchfield is more than satisfied with, with the hires and exploring the work with them. And then, the only other thing I would point you to, just to give you some scope, and I won't go over every detail tonight, I don't want to necessarily engage a discussion at this point in the evening, I'm the same with the force name, but I did want to provide you with the timeline for the force name based on our D W I activities. This, I wouldn't, I wouldn't focus too far in on the dates that you have identified there, that's just to kind of give you some scope. If everything, you know, if we waved a magic wand and everything went according to plan, we can certainly, based on the schedule, based on the information that I've gathered from the agencies, we could conceivably be executing a construction contract in March of two thousand and nineteen. But obviously, you know, there could be any number of mitigating factors which alter the timeline. But, you know, we're really looking at, we're really looking at a couple of phases here. We went through, we've, we went through, we have the bid design package actually submitted, we have the engineering reports submitted. There's a, there's a phase of the. There's a, there's a phase of, of what they call the finding of no significant impact or Fonzie process, which you have in the next few items there, which, you know, we have to conduct public hearings, um, gather comments, send those comments, gather comments, respond to comments, um, work with PWI on those comments. Then they would, they would essentially, then after that, turn it over to, um, turn it over to LGC. We would, um, get, begin seeking engineering report approval, um, get the design and bid package approved by November, advertise open bids, and then the board would be looking at resolutions of, of awards and, um, recommendation letters then early in, in nineteen. But, you know, again, there's any number of things that can come into play on that, so.
What does DWI do?
DWI is the drinking water.
Department of Water.
Department of Water Infrastructure, yeah. Yeah.
That's a good acronym for me.
Yeah, that's the one, actually, the loan program is through DWI.
At their mail, too.
Sorry. And then, and then plans, more plans, one of the things I was trying not to scare Elizabeth away today was how many of these things she's actually gonna be taking over. So we can start, start getting rolling and, you know, really having community report, I don't think, in here. And then July twenty-third is gonna be a very busy meeting, so, um, as this, as that July meeting usually is, I think one of these years was probably gonna want to take those, maybe, I hate to say it, having a second meeting in July, so. But that is not this year. With that, I have nothing else to say, other than whatever you might ask me to say.
Any questions for Brian Grisbeck?
I don't have a question, I just have a, a update. The Chatham County Affordable Housing Committee has moved their goal to meet from July fifth to July twelve due to the holiday.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner concerned. May I go?
Have it, won't you lie?
Oh, I got it.
You all are crazy during that phase, right?
Yes, right.
Oh, wonderful. How could you do that?
Very careful.
Okay, I'll be there.
That was the only, I don't have anything. Michael?
Uh, thank first course name, DWI timeline, awesome.
Yeah, it's gonna be shot to happen, but, but.
We can do it tonight.
Enjoy it while you're.
I'm enjoying it.
You're welcome, Alan.
Thank you.
Donaldson.
Um, great. So, the Donaldson's approval, what was the date that that was being approved?
Two days.
Two days. So it preceded our last working. It seems, seems like that would be really material for us to have known at that meeting when we were contemplating changing our ordinances. Why was that known, not known across the board? I think at least two board members knew. Why do we not all know that?
You're asking me, this, I don't know.
My understanding was that there was consultation with Paul Messick and that Paul Messick indicated that it was not be appropriate for the planning department to turn down the request. It was not meant to be had come before the board, it should be done administratively through the planning department, is that correct?
Well, that was, the initial, um, discussion was when you all were notified that he had attempted to revoke the zoning enforcement, I mean, zoning compliance certificate. And I questioned that because I don't think zoning compliance certificates have a time limit. And, um, I guess it evolved from there.
My concern was that it was reported at a meeting that Donaldson's permit expired. Is that not, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. And so, you're saying that there really, it wasn't an expiration?
I, I don't know that he had a permit. He had a zoning compliance certificate, which is what you get when you go to apply for a building permit. And it says that the use that you intend to make of the property for which you want the building permit is permitted under the zoning orders. In two thousand and sixteen, it, I think, under the ordinance it was written, which said funeral homes or crematorium was permitted. And so, apparently, in two thousand and sixteen, he was given a zoning compliance certificate. Apparently Jeff concluded that that was only good for a year, and so when you all got the email, in two thousand and eighteen, uh, he had indicated to Donaldson that that certificate had expired. I think Donaldson then reapplied and was given, um, some difficulty about reapplying. But then I think, I mean, I learned last time you all met that, that he had gotten, he had been reissued the certificate's name of loss. So I don't know why or when, or that happened or not.
Mr. Messick, do you learn that on June eleventh?
Yes, at, at the end of the meeting.
I never heard that. Even after the vote, I heard the speculation, but I never heard that. My concern is that there was information held by certain board members, but not all board members. And we were contemplating actual amendment to our zoning. And that information was, it impacted that decision. It didn't make us look very good as a town. And, um, yeah. It's late, we're all tired. I just want to file complaint, request that in future, if we are proceeding with policymaking and an administrative decision is made that renders that policy option in question, um, I think this board needs to know that. I wouldn't have revisited Mr. Jones's decision. I understand that it was an administrative decision. But I think that reflects very poorly on this board that, that that happened, so.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Moved by Jay Farrell.
Second.
Seconded by Michael Fierko. Please, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.